Six thirty one according to this.
Thank you.
So, we have minutes of October eleventh.
Motion to accept the minutes of October eleventh. Second.
Is there...
Minutes of discussion?
Yep.
On the public, it says public hearing Hilltop on page two. Hilltop Estate subdivision, the next line from the bottom on that paragraph, it says the water from the lots on the hill will then run across Britnell Drive. I thought they were going under it.
Well, yeah, under and across.
And I had a question which occurred to me as I was reading the notes. We refer to the engineer, his name is just escaping me frequently, but, and I wonder, yeah Carl, thank you, that he, since we pay him, should he be noted on the board? I didn't even see it on this one I'm looking at. A lot of times it's staff people, staff member, president.
Yeah, we should have put Carl.
George, Tameka, and...
Carl should have been there.
Since he is an employee of the town.
Oh, okay.
He's not an employee of the town.
Those are just staff numbers.
Yeah, he's paid by the subdivision accounts. He's technically, he's technically not an employee of the town. He's paid via the subdivision accounts.
Right.
So I'm not sure we consider him staff.
I guess what you would do if you wanted to account for him being here, we add a category called guests. When we have a guest in the audience, like tonight we have guests, then you could just have it listed accordingly, or listed for the particular item we need to. But not, they're not really staff, but they are a guest.
No, right. I just thought that he should be here.
So, just to be clear, you don't feel that it's sufficient referencing him in the minutes themselves as who he is and where he's from? You want it listed separately?
I think he should be identified as to what his role is. That's, that's my real question.
Okay. I did clarify that in the minutes, that he was an engineer with Quinn Engineering, but if you feel that it needs to be separate, I can certainly do that.
Yeah, if that's what the board would like. I mean, it is, it is listed here that he's the engineer. It states what he's, what his business is, but if you want it as a guest, then you can have a guest list under that.
My, my point is to have him, I don't, I don't see what you're saying. He's identified as an engineer, but I will take your word for it.
Well, under Bryce Lemon Estate Street Acceptance on page one.
Oh, okay.
It says, where it said, nothing has changed, we limitation of property, Quinn Engineering confirmed that, so his occupation is stated there, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion items? Karen, none? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next we have Bryce.
Before you go from that norm, that what I was mentioning, I think we need to ask the select board if there's a mailing that came in to you that somehow needs to get to you. Like I said, I saw the letter from the applicant for the sixty-one A, and it had Norm Anderson on it, so somebody should be getting you that email. I don't know how it gets to you, but it should get to you somehow, either in your box, or through Dave, or somehow.
Do you recall anything like that coming from the planning board?
I don't have any note of this item that's been discussed.
Okay. Only reason I saw it is I literally looked at the letter, because Karen got the package for the FICOM for the sixty-one A, and I was just like, uh...
I can look into it after this meeting.
Okay. That's all I wanted, to make sure is that you're getting what you need to get in front of you. If it's addressed to you, somebody should get it to you.
You know, if it came through any of the, through the town channels.
Yeah, that's how it came in.
It should automatically go into, you know, special account that I have.
Okay, good enough.
But I, and I check that frequently, so.
All right, good enough. I just wanted to bring that up, because I didn't like the fact that it was addressed to the planning board chairman, and nobody knew anything about it. It sort of irked me a little.
Okay, good enough.
Okay, Bryce Lemon Estate Subdivision Administration, Homeowners Association Discussion, and all that sort of thing. And I believe we have town council here.
Yes.
And we also...
Yep.
And I'll just say welcome.
Thank you.
Also have Joe Buckley, our DPW Commissioner?
Director.
Director, okay. Whichever you want to be called here. So, I don't know, just as a little bit of, I guess, introduction, there certainly has been some, I don't know, discussion, some, I'll call it downright complaints, and other things about the homeowners discussion, the homeowners association, all the way from whether the buyers of the homes are in any way notified directly, and I guess that's one particular thing that I'm gonna be asking, I'm gonna be asking town council anyway, to just the idea of whether or not a homeowners association should be responsible for the care of the open space, and particularly the drainage structures. So, I don't know, with that, anyone from the board want to stack something here?
I'd like to. Do you have the original conditions when they were accepted, and...
Do I have them here? No.
Yes, sir. I have the certificate of approval for the subdivision from 2014, which was previously sent to the board a couple of times, but I also have a paper copy here.
And what are you looking for?
What were the special conditions?
I'm just gonna give this to you. The special conditions are on the last page.
General condition. Construction conditions. And the, the date when you get... This certificate is dated November tenth, two thousand fourteen. Special conditions, phasing, to phase three. Okay, one thing you might be interested in, special condition two, the applicant shall contribute fifty dollars at the time of sale of each unit within the subdivision to a homeowners association trust being managed by the Bryce Lemon Homeowners Association. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So, the homeowners association has a regulation on the open space subdivision regulations, and I don't think it would be in the condition. It's a, it's a regulation, you have to do it.
Yeah, it's, it's part of the subdivision regs, so there's three, there's three options that can be picked.
Apparently, it was changed though sometime, apparently, because that was never in the original open space.
It's a loss.
I think it was.
Original? Mm-hmm. Pretty sure it did. And we've, and we've had to put them on every one of open space.
It might have been, prior to two thousand and six, there might have been a difference, but the two thousand and fourteen, we'd updated the subdivision regs, and that's what was, what's the word I'm looking for? This was signed off on as in two thousand and fourteen, I think.
There is... This is going through all of the conditions of approval.
I don't think we'd have called it special for the HOA. It would just part of the regular subdivision requirement. The only thing that might have been called out in the meetings is which choice was made, but that wouldn't be in the conditions, I don't think. That'd be up to the option of the developer on which one he takes, or she. You know, the, the town can own it.
Right.
There were three different choices.
But that's open space.
Yeah.
That's not the, the homeowners association is completely...
There is no other reference to a homeowners association.
You're correct, yeah. I was thinking of the three conditions, who owns the...
Is that a standard, is that standard in all the other?
Is what's standard.
That language about the homeowners association, fifty dollars?
Not necessarily, no. That's determined individually.
That's sticky.
Well, that's what I was wondering, why was that put in there, if there's other developments in town where it wasn't put in, just because a lot of that, that of meeting and put in there.
Just a negotiation type thing.
So it was done, but then...
Yes, I mean, in order for me to complete my subdivision, once it got approved, I had to get, I think I sent it over at the time, Paul Cranwell's counsel. We drafted it, Paul approved it, and it got put on record, the homeowners association. If you're looking for how it got there, it's required.
And then the extra for the fifty dollars was part of a negotiation when we were finishing the subdivision approval.
I thought that was, you know, when Addison Redfield was there.
I don't think it's in the regs, if I'm not mistaken. I don't think that fifty dollars in there.
I had brought it up because I wanted the money to go to the open space, because I did not know this homeowners association was going on. All right, it's just that I will try to look this up and see if I have it, and I'll go back over.
Just want to see if we put the fifty dollars in there.
Well, I'm gonna go ahead with my, my question, particularly for town council, because I guess this is the part of this whole thing that bothers me more than anything else. And I don't know, I'm gonna just, yeah.
That's in there.
I'm just gonna try to be as, as clear as I can about how exact I'm looking for your answers to be. In the process of selling or buying a house, for example, in the subdivision, and I'm gonna say, starting from, let's say, an original purchase and sales agreement, and continuing all the way through to the final closing of the sale of that house, would there necessarily be any document that the buyer would have to sign, initial, or view that declares something about the words, using the words, "a homeowners association"?
So, so thank you, if I may, Mr. Chairman, Amy Quessel, town council. So, what I have is, I, there, I have a standard homeowners association declaration of trust, which is a seventeen-page document. So, so that's what we're looking at for a homeowners association. We need to make sure that it has every, everything in it. So, what the planning board should, what I recommend the planning board do is that the planning board, that the planning board issue conditions in their definitive subdivision decision, and the, the conditions as an example would be, the first one would be, the homeowners association documents shall be submitted to the board, and if necessary, the Rutland Town Council for review and approved an approval. Prior to the issuance of any certificate of occupancy, the board and council shall have thirty days to review and approve the HOA documents. The second one would be that the HOA documents must be supplied to each buyer of a lot with a signed acknowledgement. And then, the other things, the other conditions that I recommend being in the decision, the subdivision decision, are based on the actual subdivision. So, one of them is, if, if the town is not interested in ever maintaining the subdivision road, then there can be a condition that the way within the development shall not be dedicated or accepted by town meeting. And then there's a lot of other responsibility language that goes from the developer to the homeowners association. If there's anything such as screening that's required under the subdivision plan, that would be also, we could put that in the subdivision decision, which would then carry over into the home, into the HOA documents.
What does screening mean, Miss?
So, so screening is trees or fencing from abutting properties?
Okay, can I, may I interrupt? Go, go ahead, I'm sorry. Has some of this, this is more like a condo document than...
Yeah, I was gonna say, let's, yeah, let's hold off on that. I don't, I don't think that's gonna be applicable here.
Okay.
Okay. So, go ahead, Amy.
How long was that?
Okay. Okay, still, I've gotta, I've gotta...
Didn't answer the question.
That's right. I've gotta get back to my question. Those are all wonderful suggestions, probably, but we don't have them on this subdivision, or any other approved subdivision.
Right.
Okay. Absent those things, once again, is there any document in that wholesale process that would mention the words homeowners association that would have to be presented to every buyer prior to the final, final closing of the, of the house?
So, when a buyer purchases a property, their closing, so it's, 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 so every single time I start talking, you guys disappear?
We're all here.
So, when you guys, when I talk, I get, I just get the screen, but then when you, it's weird. Sorry. So, I'll just talk to the screen. So, when a buyer goes to purchase a lot, their closing attorney has to do a chain of title. That chain of title needs to show that there is a homeowners declaration of trust in that, in that chain of title. The closing attorney should obviously pull that and inform the buyer of the requirements of the homeowners association trust.
Okay, so you're saying it is the attorney for the home buyer's responsibility to make the buyer aware that there is this homeowners trust?
Correct, but what I'm, what it, correct, but what I'm also saying is that this board can make it a requirement of their decision. It's very common to do that.
For conings, not for something.
Okay.
No, no, actually, no. I have numerous homeowners associations that I have that do this.
Amy, it's Tim Norwald. I've got a, if it's part of our subdivision regulations that's referenced as part of the subdivision decision, does that, I get it, it's buried in there, I understand that, but does that, again, we didn't put it in the, the conditions of, of the subdivision, but since we reference the regulations that call out a homeowners agreement, is that sort of covering the requirement of homeowners in, in this subdivision?
Or... So, so, it's my understanding that this subdivision might possib, from the information I've been given, might possibly have an open space, it might be an open space? Is that true?
Yes.
Yes.
So, so then some, so yeah, so some, so that open space parcel under your bylaw has to be owned and maintained by someone, and one of those options is the homeowners association. So if it's not being maintained by the homeowners association, then it is a violation of the bylaw?
Jill?
Silly question. Where is it recorded so that the title attorney or the title company can find it?
So it's recorded in the original, it's recorded with the subdivision plan, so therefore, it's recorded under the, under the overall parcel, so it would follow every chain of title that, every lot that is subdivided out.
So, we would have concrete record of that at the registry of deeds?
Yes. So, one of the things is that it, you, the homeowners documents should be submitted and approved by the board prior to the issuance of any certificate of occupancy, so they have to record it prior to any certificate of occupancy, and show proof of recording to get a search, a C out.
And Norm, we, that's part of our subdivision hearings and final approvals, is that document has to be...
Yes.
Approved as part of the subdivision closing.
And we do that.
And we do that, correct. And we, we go through town council, and we work with the developers council to make sure everything's in order before we do that, before we approve it, and put it with the subdivision, and get it recorded.
I only ask because I want...
No, no, I just, Joe, I was, I was sort of dotting the i's and crossing the t's to your question.
I just want to make sure. So that document's there?
Yeah.
So, the title attorney, so my point is, there's no reason why a title attorney wouldn't have seen it, or a title search company wouldn't have seen it.
Correct. That's my assumption, yeah.
Clay?
I would like to just add a couple, couple of things. First of all, in my recollection, these homeowners associations are to maintain drainage, for the most part. Secondly, if for some reason the town doesn't record, doesn't accept the streets, there is a provision in there where the homeowners association has to take care of the streets. But what I'm trying to get across is, the town doesn't charge anybody for drainage, to maintain it. They charge it for water, they charge it for sewer.
It's on the table.
Okay, it's on the table, but right now, they don't. So, this vehicle is put in place because in the past, in Rutland, if there was a detention pond on your lot, you were the one responsible to maintain it, nobody else. And the town had no way, they had to enforce it upon the homeowner. Any drainage that's off the road, the town doesn't take care of. It's not in there, because they don't get paid for it. It's not a utility, it's not considered a utility. So the planning board said that we want a homeowners association so that if a detention pond needs to be maintained, it doesn't end up being the person who actually owns the lot. It, it maintained by everybody in the town. I can tell you, I've done, I don't know, maybe fifteen or twenty subdivisions from Shrewsbury to Holden to West Boylston to Chalton to Rutland. These, they require them everywhere. This isn't something that's new or, or different just for Rutland. They're required everywhere. Everybody purchases them with these in place, even on not open space subdivisions. I know Rutland doesn't have it right now for, if they're not open space, but if they're open space, they're required. Every single title I have to sign from, as manager of the homeowners association currently, that there's no money due, and that has to get recorded. And for the most part, that document that I sign gets recorded by the buyer's attorney. The buyer's attorney are aware of them. They know these things don't have much glue, and the town is the one, the town comes to, like, if I'm the, whoever, the president of the homeowners association, the town's gonna come to me and they're gonna say, "We had to maintain the drainage structure. We want to get paid for it. It's not on the street." Then I'd have to go to the people in the subdivision now and say, "They want to be paid for that."
As the president of the homeowners, not as the developer, just to make sure it's clear.
That's correct, as the president of homeowners. But, right now, that can't exist because I'm still maintaining all the drainage. So it doesn't, it doesn't really even affect them. The only way this could really take effect in this time period is if, for some reason, the town doesn't accept the streets, and then the town has to plow them, and they charge for that. The homeowners would be burdened with that charge, based upon this homeowners association.
My name is Gene Cougar. I live at seventy-one Woodside Avenue, and I'd just like to get back to your original question. Did the homeowners know about an HOA? The answer is no. Not one representative of Blair Building, that all of the brothers, the, the real estate agent that handled it, Michael Fall, Janetti, Patty, whatever, Zuccarelli, she retired, and Christina, nobody mentioned about a homeowners association, okay?
In fact, if you said, "Is there one?", they said, "No", as we asked.
Okay. Now, I did real estate back in New York, and there's a thing called full disclosure. When Blair was part of the Board of Realtors, he put listings in the MLS listing, and it specifically said, "Homeowners Association", and was left blank. That's a lie. That's a lie. It should be yes, because he's selling lots in the development. And as far as Tim goes, when he said about, it's the homeowners or the attorney's obligation to know about the HOA, in the contracts that Blair gave everybody, they said, "From the day they receive their, their certificate of occupancy, you have one week to close." So when Jennifer Curtsy, Critsy, whatever her name is, informed my attorney, she had, what, seven days, six days, five days to get it to New England Title, and that lady had to run the title on the property, on the property. Put your hand down, please, I'm not finished yet. Has to run the title on that property.
I just want to speak next to you.
And then, by the time the stuff, the information came back, it was after the closing. At the closing, they, they slid a packet of closing documents, and on the, in the cover of that document, or that folder, it had that this was an HOA. That's the first time I knew that. My attorney didn't know about it, because she didn't get back the title report from New England Title, or abstract, whatever they want. So in that contract, if you didn't close within one week, you were subject to monetary fines by Blair Building. So everybody quickly closed, and we found out after the fact. But that's how the contract was, was, was structured. But, nobody knew that there was an HOA. I called up Worcester, I called, I spoke to Colin, or Colleen, whatever her name is, the head of Worcester, and they said, "It's an HOA, but it's not an HOA." I said, "How come it says HOA on the document?" She said, "Well, they don't collect money." So I said, "If they don't collect money, then it's not an HOA." She goes, "Yes, it is an HOA." So, either you talk out of your mouth, or you talk out of the other end, okay? I don't understand it, but we found out that it's an HOA after the fact. Then we found out about liability. You're not allowed to put a fence around the detention pond trying to limit our exposure to liability. There's debris in the open space. The board approved an action not required to take open space from, from the development without checking out the information. This goes back to two, three years ago. But that was all worked out. Clay was a gentleman about it, and he said he wasn't taking the open space. But, nobody knew in phase one, phase two, I can't speak for phase three, I can't speak for phase four, but when we all, and I believe Tim came out with a comment back then, which I thought was a little irresponsible, "Buy beware, get a different attorney." Thirty closings, thirty different attorneys, nobody knew about. So you're telling me, is it the attorney, or is it the way that the whole deal was structured?
Can't answer that.
Okay.
Like I said, I can't, I can't answer that, and it's...
Well, you asked a question, and the answer is no. My, my neighbor told you the same exact thing. Nobody knew about an HOA. She's shaking her head, she's arising, I think, of phase three. She didn't know about an HOA, so...
The thing is, well, I'm just getting the feeling, I've had this feeling for a while, that my guess is, whatever was done, was done legally, but sorry, I'm just gonna characterize it as sneaky.
Thank you.
Come on, there's nothing sneaky about it. It's on the title. May I ask you, by the way?
Well, let's put it this way. For whoever you have a representative for selling your houses, Clay, and Bryce Lemon, when you first meet with a potential buyer, whoever your representative is, my thoughts would be one of the very first sentences out of their mouth. Should have nothing to do with the price, the size, the house, the type. It should be, "Oh, you will be a member of a homeowners association."
Should be given the document.
That's not my job.
That's my personal feeling.
Okay, fine, and I respect it, honestly. But it's not my job. It's on the title, and titles don't get run in five days, Gene. Titles get run, right, right away they run them. The reason we ask you to close in five days is because the town starts charging real estate taxes the minute you get an OP. So, we, we have, and we have to pay those up until closing. So what we're saying is, if you delay the closing, then you have to pay the real estate taxes, not us. That's the purpose of the five days.
I have a question for you. Why would an attorney run a title report on a property that's not going to close for six or seven months during the time?
Because they want to know if the title's clear.
Well, wait a minute.
Before you sign a P and S, don't you want to know the title's clear?
Well, but I have six months to the title.
But this isn't a case for that.
Be contacted.
You're, just because you got that representation, you will miss the...
No, no, no.
Don't blame me.
You do it after you...
Bullshit.
I don't blame you.
I'm gonna hear praise for five minutes.
Well, who am I going to blame?
Time out. You don't owe him the turn, boy, say.
He's out of what he's...
I'm sorry.
Amy had something to say. Amy?
Oh, no, somebody's raising their hand.
Yes, hi. My name is Margaret Murphy Lyons, and here it is, phase three. I'm just here to speak on behalf, I think, you know, I cannot speak on behalf of all of phase three residents.
of all of phase three residents, but Christopher and I were well aware from the, early on in the process of the homeowners association. I think that what we're hearing collectively and moving forward, not just for Bryce Estates but for the town, is just that there's a uniform process of notification. And our interest truly is, if and when the streets are accepted by the town, you know, what will that really look like in terms of our responsibilities? So I, I don't know that the arguing back and forth is getting anywhere as opposed to maybe answering resident questions that may come along.
And I, I would agree with her. It's not that I'm upset about the homeowners association, it was just the methods of communication and we're really not sure what's happening with it and what to expect going forward.
Think, Norm threw the chair. I think that was your answer, your question to Amy. If, if we've got it in our, our subdivision regs, what do we, as a planning board, need to do different than what we're doing now?
Well
Do we need to do anything?
You need to expand on the home.
Do we need to do anything different?
Yeah, we need to expand.
I would say that you guys, voting to not have it be a requirement to be communicated in a purchase and sales or something along those lines is kind of where it fell off. Because he's not, it's not in writing that he is not required to put it in that, then that's really not on him.
Yeah. Can we just get the names and addresses of the people?
Sorry, Emma Foster, I live at One Pioneer Circle.
Okay, board?
The only comment I wanted to get, say is, typically on, on financial transactions, the town or its board does not get involved in that. We, we basically set the regs for the subdivision, the roads, all that stuff. But when it comes to all that stuff, that's, when I, all that stuff, the financial, it's where the attorneys really handle all that.
So I think she did just, if I'm not mistaken, that Amy said that in the subdivision requirements, there can be different methods of communication
Yeah.
that are required.
That's what I was trying to figure out, what we need to do.
Right.
I just, you know, I, I've heard one side of, you know, oh for thirty on people, but then we heard another one that was, that was very much, you know, right in the beginning, from the beginning, it was, you know, she was notified. So why that happens, I, I don't know, I don't know that anybody can answer those questions. I'd rather the experience she had, where, okay, this could be a potential, this might happen here, this might happen there, it should be part of that initial conversation. Can we make that rules and guidelines in the PNS? Is no, we, I don't think we can.
She's in phase three, so maybe things change, but in phase one, two, nothing.
You know, so
Can I, can I interrupt to raise my hand? So I had actually seen a few residents in phases one and two, just this past weekend, who did articulate that they were aware. So perhaps, again, it goes back to the uniform process of notification. Whether that did or didn't happen, we can't speak to, like you said, thirty-plus closings. But there were people, I don't think it's over thirty. I think that perhaps there are super strong feelings regarding this and the lines are getting blurred.
Can I make one more comment?
Yep.
And all of the houses, I probably sold a thousand houses literally with homeowners associations. It's the first time anything's ever come up on it, number one, with the residents. Secondly, I've never seen the town enforcing, ever. Forty years I've been doing this, I've never seen a town enforcing. Do they, you think they're gonna, if they have to clean up a detention pond or if there's something wrong in a drain man hole that's off the site, or if they've got to, you know, clean up a storm scepter, you think he's gonna charge the residents? Never happens, does he, Joe?
Joe?
We've got to clean it first.
Yeah, that's true.
I'll mention to you about your budget.
But the point is that I've never seen them enforced, ever, ever. All the years I've been doing it.
Can I just speak on one thing about that? So, thirty years ago, when you built subdivisions, you weren't seeing the detention ponds like you see them now, okay? And as the stormwater permitting process from the federal government grew, the requirements for what comes out of the pipe or what's released to a brook stream or pond got that much more stringent, which is what caused the creation of detention ponds, hydrodynamic separators, retention ponds and the like. And, one of the things that the state unfortunately, or fortunately, put into the toolbox was things like the homeowners association agreements because, in Massachusetts, which is a non-delegated state, and that's a whole different conversation, but plainly, there's no money for cities and towns to take care of these structures. So what the, the state gave as a toolbox, or something in the toolbox, was to create things like the homeowners associations to deal with them. So chances are when the streets accepted, we would end up with the drainage in the street, catch basins, storm drains, pipelines, even some of the manholes within the right of way. But the, the thought was to try and defer some of the costs for the end-up pipe treatment. If the system's designed well enough and maintained, a lot of the maintenance isn't that bad. I hope that gives you some insight as to where it came from.
I'm, I'm just curious, uh, do you know of any existing detention ponds at this point that have been in existence for any length of time, that have actually required and have had maintenance performed on them?
We, the town has performed stuff on a couple locations we own. But we, I mean, that, you'd re, to do that right, you'd have to inspect them regularly and we currently don't have the staff. One of the things we gave to the select board recently was a proposal to try and develop some, a stormwater utility to offset some of those costs. Again, stormwater compliance or compliance with federal regulations for a NPDS permit is an unfunded mandate. And it's tasks you have to do over and above conventional public works. So we've gone to the town to ask for some more funds for that. So far, what's come out of it is the possibility of a stormwater utility. So to answer your question, is there someone at Public Works who can go and check all these detention ponds, there's probably thirty or forty of them townwide, and determine whether someone's cleaning them annually or cleaning them regularly, or have any documentation at all? No, we don't have it. Do we, are we supposed to have it, according to the permit? Yes, yes we are. We're just trying to get it funded. I hope that gives you some insight.
Talk about getting things funded and, you know, I'm learning how these things work too, so, uh, fifty dollars per home times thirty is fifteen hundred dollars, it doesn't seem like a lot of money, right? So how does that fund, get more money? Is that a realistic question to ask? And I'm not saying it's on you, or it's on you, or it's on the town. Is that, I mean realistically, you're gonna have to eventually, ten years, twenty years, thirty years, these things are gonna need maintenance. And the question's gonna come back up after this board's gone, the next board, who's gonna be paying for this stuff? And there's a whole, you guys are gonna sell and be gone and, you know, I, I don't know if there's
As it stands now, the, the individual homeowners would be assessed a fee or dues, whatever you want to call it, to fund any of that.
And probably none of them know that. Or not, a lot of them, not to say none of them. So I'm just trying, again, trying to just get as vocal as we can in this, there's a whole town of people around this. How, how does it all come together in the end to see it? I mean, I, I see a sign when a development's going in and you're starting to sell the houses, you want to make sure that signs are up, stop signs, all those types of things are up, their crosswalks are there, as soon as you can, can there be a sign saying? Developments could potentially have homeowners associations check with your attorneys before, you know, can the town, I'm not saying it's the planning board's obligation, but could the town put out more advertisements, so to speak, as to what some of these could? It just sounds like there's, there's no, again, lack of connection.
We would have, we would have to make some changes to subdivision and/or special permit regulations, which I think we need to take a look at.
I honestly, can I just, sorry. I honestly, this, this is legal, more than it is a planning board. Planning board, think about it, you guys are really charged with the safety of the ways. What does this really have to do with you, except for, you've had to find a way for the town to be taken care of if there is a maintenance issue with drainage? And there's a hundred and twelve homes in Bryce Estates, Kevin, I want, at fifty bucks a home, that money gets put in a bankbook and that grows over time. So in ten years, you know, maybe it's ten grand or fifteen grand. If those, if those detention ponds are really maintained, we had to do something like this in a study a few times, Julian's actually done it for us. I think it's three hundred dollars a year to maintain a detention pond. Basically, you mow it.
Cut the lawn.
Yeah?
Cut the lawn.
Yeah, you just cut the lawn, that's all there is to it. It's all set up, you know, there's water coming in and out of it, there's more flow channels. This is a legal document, mowing it anywhere close to a planning board document. I think this is the only way that the people get to put their, see what, what's bothering them, and I understand that. But, it's never come up in any of our stuff before. And like I said, I probably sold a thousand houses, all the houses we sell in Holden, I mean, I'm, I'm still signing as the president of the homeowners association for Stony Brook Estates and I could, I turned that over to the town six years ago. And there's not, there's never been a fee, there's never been anything, no one's ever come to me looking for it. It just is more of a legal document than it is a planning board document.
Is it, is it possible? I'm just, now, he's had his hand raised, I got to something.
I think the issue is that people didn't know about it, about the HOA, okay? Would it have affected my decision to buy my home? Probably not. But, like I said, there's a thing in real estate called full disclosure. So, don't look at sky.
It's on the title, Gene.
No, it's, that
I get the title after I close, okay? When I go to an open house and there's a representative from Blair Building Corporation, whatever, there should be a notification, this is an HOA, I should have been given the twelve or fifteen page document stating the rules and regulations, and I should have signed a piece of paper saying that I've received this. That's how I did it back in Staten Island, that's how the Board of Realtors conducted business, okay? So there's no he said, she said. It's, this is my signature, I received it, yes, I went for it, we would not be having this discussion. But nobody, or no one, mentioned about the HOA. And that's where people, as soon as they found out about liability, you know, people coming into the development, kids going into the pond, maybe somebody gets hurt, everybody's responsible for a certain percentage, whatever it is, a hundred and twelve houses divided, whatever, so that's where the problem came in. But, like I said, full disclosure, I found out after I closed, after the title report was delivered to me, that it said this was an HOA. Not before, and there's no reason to run a title before, because if I, if I do a, if I do a title report on the first of January and I'm not closing until June thirtieth, something illegal, somebody could have dumped oil, pesticides on the property, I buy it and I'm responsible for doing a phase one, phase two, or phase three cleanup, okay? So I want to know at the very last minute that what I'm buying is free and clear of encumbrances and lanes or anything. That's why it doesn't make sense to do it at the beginning.
Gene, Gene, can you hear me?
Who's this?
Steve. Steve Maintainis, 51 Woodside.
Yes, Steve.
So, um, on, on this, I, I honestly don't think the HOA is all that big of a deal. You are correct in terms of full disclosure. I, I mean, I asked Folgenetti when we were buying the house if there was an HOA and he told me no, but regardless, I was not aware of it until, until after I signed, actually until I reviewed my title policy. What I would do is just check your title policy, if it's not listed on there, go back to the closing attorney and discuss that with him. Because, again, um, in my opinion, it's not, it's not a, a big deal, you're right, the, the disclosure part was, you know, a kick, a kick in the five hole, but, at the end of the day, I, I really don't think this is gonna cost us all that much to maintain this thing, as please say, you know, fifty dollars, even if it's a year, you're right, again, it's, it's double sided here. I think we're both, both right and wrong on this, and we kind of have to move this thing, this thing forward at this point.
Going forward, it's not a big
Hold, hold, hold.
So Sean, I'm gonna be, tell me three what's that. I agree with Steve. The homeowners association is what it is, it's there. But, I have questions going back, I think, over a year ago, when we brought this all up. What was it originally, in the operating maintenance procedures with the engineer who was originally supposed to take care of it? I know it's labeled, I know it's there, I've read it. I just want to see if you guys know what the original wording is, the maintenance of all the stormwater within the subdivision.
It's going to be the responsibility of the homeowners.
No, that's what I'm asking. Sorry, remind him, go ahead.
Okay, go ahead.
So when you do a stormwater management plan, you've got some basic stuff, you sweep streets, you clean storm drains, you clean your outfall, your detention ponds every so often. What you're asking, if I'm correct, is, what, in other words, what's gonna be the responsibility to this group? Did the engineer really clearly lay it out? In other words, that, that's what you're asking, correct?
That and who it says is to take care of it.
It's in the stormwater, just saying. Okay, I can't, I can't necessarily confirm that, I'd have to take your word for it. Yes?
I thought Kevin gave, um, brought up a good point on, is this really a planning board issue? And then
At lea, at least, and this is just my, my, my take on it, very, very quickly. For the most part, no. The only thing that brings us into it is that we do mention in our subdivision regulations or the special permit regulations, a homeowners association is a, an accepted method for this open space. And since we have mentioned it in there, we probably ought to clarify
Mm-hmm.
the details of it.
I agree with that.
And the thing is, now, that requires a modification of the subdivision regulations, or the, and I'm not sure where it all lies, or the special permit.
So just
Bylaw language, which, no matter what, will not affect the already approved subdivisions. It would only approve subdivisions in the future.
So it's always, just to recap what you said, it's, the planning board's responsibility to have that in our regulations, that it might exist?
We, we can probably make that a responsibility, I'm not saying it is.
Right, so that we, we could help solve this problem by changing and clarifying our rules and regulations, but
Hopefully avoid the situation.
But this particular situation, I'm having difficulty seeing why, you know, what we can do to ratify it and is it our responsibility to do it?
I don't believe so.
We don't have any power to change it, to change what happened to you folks.
I, I don't believe so.
Dan Foster, One Pioneer Circle, I guess, is this fifty dollars strictly for the retention bonds, detention bonds? Or, when we're talking open space, do we mean like coming up to our side in phase three, there's grass planted on the left-hand side? Is that something that the HOA would be responsible for covering too? And maybe that's just a question for Clay, I don't know. Is that something that somebody needs to come in and mow that? Or are we only talking about the retention ponds down at the bottom of the hill that need to be maintained?
It will be any property that's beyond your individual property line.
Okay.
Open space pathways, anything associated with them.
So it's more than just the retention?
Yeah.
Henceforth
Call the Saks.
Do you think that maybe in the future, there will be no more open space? And it has to, all, all open space has to go to the town?
They won't take it, they, I tried to stop the town every time, and they don't want it, at all.
We talked about that three years ago.
But do you realize, what a burden it would have taken off all these people?
Right.
Oh yeah.
They would have, they, through the taxes, they would eventually have to pay, you know, for cleanup and things like that. But, I think that's something for, for residents, I don't think.
Just as a really quick note, I think it's more just, we're all coming here based as like fear, we have no idea what's happening. Is it two hundred dollars a month? Is it a fifty dollars a year? You know what I mean? And that's like, with how, what the world is right now, I think that's just where everybody's, everybody is just, doesn't know what's happening and wants to have an answer.
That's what I said, I just want, and this may be a stretch, but, you know, I think of, I'm looking at these pictures, right? And I just see a brochure that goes into a sales folder that says, you may be a part of, or there might be, as Blair Builders, would it make sense to put a little more effort into the acknowledgement to the buyers and say, this is gonna come down on you, if you guys want to put another fifty a year in, maybe that's not a bad idea, because then you would have some money to go and do some stuff down the road and you'd have more of down the road and you'd have more of a money. Or maybe in that, in that initial purchase out of 112 people, there could be somebody that would love to be a homeowners association president and they're all excited about it and they take it to that next, maybe not. But I have a hundred, it could be that. There could be an opportunity for, you know, none of this to ever come back before our board because it's handled at the buyers and the sellers level. And we just put in that regulation that it needs to be there because we need to have something in place to cover the town and for other potential funding down the road.
Don't fixate on this $50 a year.
Yeah, no.
Add that in for something else.
No, but you know what, that's just what I'm saying. It's like, we just don't know.
The only 50 is that initial contribution.
Right, yes, we don't know what to expect.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
So, rather than, rather than having it in your rules and regulations, which I think is a, is a great idea, you also need to have it in your decision because your decision is recorded. And so, that's another level for a closing attorney to know that there is a homeowners association required.
Amy, this is Tim Norwell. But don't we do that by requiring the homeowners agreement to be ratified by our town council and the developers and record that with the decision? Don't, because we ask for that to be recorded, if I'm not mistaken, Norm.
It has to, yes, of course.
She's saying that in our actual decision.
Oh, we should put that in and reference it?
In the decision, there should be conditions in your subdivision decision. And one of those conditions should be that a homeowners association is required, that a homeowners association is required to be, you know, is required to be provided to buyers with their acknowledgement of receiving it, you know, things like that.
And then we could reference that document that's been recorded with the registry of deeds?
Yep.
Okay. The one thing I just wanted, what I was going to say is, in my previous life, in a different state, I was part of a homeowners association at a subdivision. And what we ended up doing was, again, the developer turned over after the houses were built, then it was up to the homeowners associations through president, vice president, treasurer, secretary, to come up with what fees they needed. Maybe it's $25, maybe it's $100, whatever it is to take care of it. So, that usually gets handled by the homeowners association when they take it over. So, that's why the developer usually put, at least in my condition, put a certain amount of money in there. And in that case, they put like five grand in for our subdivision. And then that covered the detention pond and the cleaning up of the walkways in the open space. But once that was turned over, it was up to the homeowners association to do it. And in my case, it fell flat and individual people actually did it.
That's what I was going to say, out of that, with somebody in that, 112 people, I will be whack once a year for 150 bucks.
I don't mind going mowing a little bit extra.
Once you know what needs to get done and you want your backyard to look good, so you guys can take a sprint yourselves to do it.
So, Mr. Chairman, there's also, there are also towns that do not accept subdivision roadways. And so, in that instance, it would be put in the conditions of the subdivision approval that the private way will always stay a private way. And then I actually have seen a homeowners association that requires that the homeowners association has to hire a plow contractor by November 1st of every year to make sure that there's, you know, adequate plowing. So, what Mr. Norwell was saying is correct. There are, what happens is, is the developer will, he's the declarant of the homeowners association. And once a certain amount of homes are purchased, he can move on and then the homeowners have to elect trustees or president, whatever you want to call it.
How do we make sure that that happens? You pass the flame.
That's my next question.
Yeah.
If I could ask Amy a question first? So, first of all, that's what the homeowners association makes sure of. Right now, I'm the president of it, so there's no fees.
When was your last meeting?
We never have.
Right.
So, most homeowners documents will require a meeting. It's usually the first Monday of May that I've seen. I don't know why it's the first Monday of May, but almost all...
On the calendar, Cle.
Yeah, well, if I could ask a question, this has to do with recording of a deed. Do you know of any attorney or anyone who records a deed after this, right at the sale of a house, that doesn't run the title from the point that they've run the title prior, before they record it?
I, no, I don't, I do municipal law.
Okay, so you don't, so here's what happens, just so, just if I could point this out. When you close, the bank's attorney takes the title and they run it all the way down to that day to make sure that no other liens were put on the property before they record that title, that deed. So, that's what Gene's saying is you run the title six months before. It doesn't matter how far ahead you run the title. Before your deed gets recorded, that title gets run again to that day. Because the bank isn't going to take something that has, already has a lien on it. So, I just want to make that clear, that that's the way it's done and I've seen it a thousand times. So, that's one. And number two, I've been the president of the homeowners association for all of the ones that we've put in place and I'm still the president. I've never turned it over to anybody in the subdivisions. It's been, like I said, it's at least 25 or 30 years since we've been doing these homeowners associations in other towns. Holden's required it forever, Shrewsbury, Charlton. But the point is, I've never asked anybody for any money and I've never had a meeting. These things are so benign, they're not even worth talking about. And so, it never got brought up in the past. It was just part of the subdivision rules and regs. We had to do it, we always did it. It was always on the title and lawyers are always telling them, telling the customers about it. So, I just don't know, I don't see how it's a planning board issue. I just don't see it. You made us put it on.
Mr. Chairman, it is a planning board issue because it's required under the open space, under the zoning bylaw. It's required. So, if Mr. Blair chooses option three or four, whatever one it is, to have the homeowners association take care of the open space, this cannot be a benign document. It cannot be something that's just created and never enforced. Because under the zoning bylaw, under the open space section of the zoning bylaw, someone has to own that open space and take care of it. Now, also under your subdivision rules and regulations, somebody has to take care of the drainage. So, I do agree with Mr. Blair that in, you know, 20 years ago, these homeowners associations were definitely benign. However, I also will say that, that I've seen a homeowners association, it was at least 15 years ago, that had, you know, rules and regulations, there could be no above-ground pools, there could be, you know, no RVs parked in the front yard, like things like that. So, I mean, I think they're, they're all over the map. But in your, in your circumstances, you have open space, the open space subdivision where the open space has to be maintained. And that, and also you have drainage facilities have to be maintained. And so, you have to have a homeowners association document that ensures that those things are maintained. I would, I would strongly encourage that the homeowners association gets turned over to the homeowners and that the declarant does not stay the president or the trustee of the homeowners association. But that would be in the, that would be in the HOA documents, not, that's not necessarily for us. But, but again, my whole point is that there has to be conditions in the subdivision approval that require the homeowners association and require certain conditions be included in the homeowners association. And that's the way to get the open space maintained and the drainage facilities maintained.
With that, you know, having the homeowners association passed over and the president passed on, you know, that's never happened for Mr. Blair. I guess a question for you, what would be the negative of that? What would be the drawback if you were to do that?
I've never done it, no.
So, the drawback is that you have someone in charge of your homeowners association who's not a homeowner.
No, I meant what the drawback for Mr., I'm sorry, Amy. Right, right. So, that the homeowners are in charge of that thing and what's the drawback? My question was what would be the, why, why wouldn't Blair builders or why wouldn't Mr. Blair no longer want to be the president and pass these things on? So that this, you know, and this, one other quick question on that, maintenance of, maintenance of the open space, if that's a, on that homeowners association, you know, that can be a cost down the road if it's not just, you know, you're right, you don't want forests to be grown in open space, right? So, who is cutting, is that, is that what she's discussing? Because you kind of had a question, you're like, who maintains open space and how does that physically happen in the town?
In the open space, unless, unless there was some requirement, as we have in the past, to require walking trails within the open space. But as far as cutting trees or that sort of thing, open space doesn't mean open.
Right, right, but as far as no longer, right. But that's what I'm just, so what is the maintenance, maintaining the open space? Amy, if I could, that's the detention pond.
And then if you've got, like, I can't remember the name, the East and West off of Palmigusset that have walking trails that I don't think have ever been mowed or touched over off of where Lenny built those two subdivisions? Some of those trails have never been maintained. I've driven over there and they just sit there.
And why? Because that was, HOA was putting in there and when it finally letting scoff up the money left.
Nothing happened with the...
And what did it say in there? If nothing was maintained, the town was supposed to turn it around and fix the stuff, the trails and everything else, and then bill up the people that are on there.
Yeah.
And that's what killed the HOAs in this town for a long period of time because of what happened there.
Yeah, I remember when Gary was here, we, they, somebody built a fence over one of the detention ponds and they couldn't get access. And he had to go in, take the fence down to get access to clean it out. That didn't go over well.
No. And I believe this was, this is like number two for the large subdivision. And the first one went to hell in a handbag.
So, I like Amy's suggestion, Norm, of we should probably review our subdivision regs and get more detailed under the HOA and maybe come out with this, to Kevin's point with checklists, this is what we do, you know? Here's the, here's the HOA, this is when it gets turned over, this is who we, you know, the information from the builder to the homeowners, that gets turned over at, when there's 75% houses.
I was just going to say, I mean, does it typically happen that we accept the roads after the majority of it, right, at the town meeting for the road acceptance? Can we ask the question if the homeowners association has been...
No, because we do phases. And so, sometimes, like in this case, 75% of lots haven't been conveyed.
That's what I was wondering. If 75% or the three years is up after each one of those, as it states there, that happens at the road acceptance typically for the town.
Not the way we phased it. We do usually less than 75%.
So, I assume that the open space is not, does not have a CR, does not have a conservation restriction on it?
Not yet. It has to though, according to their regs. We're required to put one on.
Okay, so, okay, well, once, why, once that goes on, I mean, that's, a CR is extremely, is extremely important, I guess, and it cannot be messed with. So, that should probably be another condition of your, of your approval, is that the CR be put on at a certain point?
It is.
At the end, because you have to put on a, it's in the open space bylaw, you have to put on, you know.
Yeah, I have the bylaw in front of me, but it doesn't necessarily say exactly when it has to be.
By the end of the instruction. Because you don't know if you need to go through it or over it in order to get to the different phases.
Amy, a quick question, 51 Woodside, Steve Maintainus again, with that conservation restriction in place, is there, you know, say 10 years from now, there's a drainage issue and we need to get into that retention pond? That restriction's in place, is there, is there increased liability for the homeowners association with that restriction in place? And I guess, how easy is it to get around the restriction, to do any maintenance on those retention ponds?
Normally, that's built into the restriction.
Okay, all right.
For my own selfish reasons as public works director, I need to know as these pieces get approved, what belongs to us exactly, okay? And I'm sure you'll get that back from Quinn when, and after it's voted, et cetera. But I think it would probably go a long way for the folks in the room if somebody could tell them exactly ultimately what they're going to be responsible for. Because that seems a little fuzzy. And I don't know who would do that? Would that come from Mr. Blair's group or would that come from your consultant? I'm not sure. But as a public employee who works for all these fine folks, I think they really need to know that.
I would think our engineer should be able to supply that.
So, to piggyback off of that, in the original design and the operating procedures, since the town of Rutland is responsible for maintaining the storm water, detention bonds, and all of that features in the original document.
Oh, I don't know.
Yeah, well, I'm saying that's what the original one says. I don't know if it's been changed since then or whatnot. And talking about Holden, Holden maintains all the subdivision detention ponds.
Well, they don't.
I've talked to most of...
I can tell you right now, I build a lot of houses in Holden, I'm a lot of...
Just real quick, do the residents of Bryce Lemon Estates get to look at the property before Mr. Blair passes it on, passes on his responsibility to the HOA? Because I don't want to accept anything without looking at it first. So, I mean, just to say, here, now you have it.
It should be easy enough for you to drive around and see what is there.
Is not being taken care of or maintained right now?
Because we don't have that.
Well, I guess first of all, before acceptance, we always do a joint inspection of the property that's going to be accepted with our DPW director, with our consulting engineer, with planning board members, and the public is invited. That is part of a public meeting. They are invited to join in seeing that inspection done.
How does that notification go out? I'm just curious.
That would, that would probably go out with a public hearing notice for acceptance of the roads.
It goes on as a meeting, a special meeting for a site visit as part of street acceptance? So, people would have to check in periodically and see what agendas have been posted?
Yeah, there would be no individual notification.
That town, that's what I'm saying. Mr. Chairman, I think we got this individuals...
I just want to give the planning commission these pictures. This is open space in the development, that's what I'm talking about, tires, boats, debris. Is that, oh, is that all going to be cleaned up? So, you have, okay. So, is that stuff going to be cleaned up before we take over? That was my main concern because if he doesn't want to maintain the HOA anymore and then he's going to give it to, I don't know, Emma Foster, she's the president of the HOA, she's going to be responsible? I mean, that's what I want to make sure, that what we're getting.
I'm a little bit curious as to where I saw some of those pictures. Whereabouts on the subdivision are those pictures?
Do you go down Lemon Circle? That new road, that's it? That's another thing, that whole development. Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, do you like the names of people making questions and comments?
Hi, can I just ask a clarifying question and please, I think this would be directed more towards council, I'm not sure. And I apologize for my ignorance about this, but in addition, I forget the gentleman's name who spoke, I understand retention ponds and drainage and things like that. And this perhaps is premature, but if, you know, it is turned over to the homeowners, are we able to modify or reestablish existing agreements? For example, you gave like RVs parked in the street, things like that. I know that on sites might sound extreme, but are we able to kind of also modify and establish things as an association? You know, I know to me, property maintenance, yards are extremely important. So, legally, are we able to modify or reestablish things?
So, yes, so provided that your, that the homeowners association documents allow you to do that, all of the ones that I've seen have allowed the homeowners association to create rules and regulations.
Thank you for answering that.
Even council, even on town, even on a town roads? So, they could make a rule or regulation that overnight parking isn't allowed during this or motor, motor home isn't allowed to be parked overnight on a town road? A homeowners association could make that rule?
I wouldn't, um...
We better, we better table that and ask questions.
I'm just curious. You're going down this, but I'm saying, okay, now all of a sudden you're saying you can do A, B, C, and D. It's no different from what's happening right now with the potential of that happening within the association and now all of a sudden, tech people know what's happening and nobody else does.
So, what I was, what I was using as an example was, like I said, I've seen one where rules and regulations do not allow clotheslines, they do not allow above-ground pools, and they do not allow RVs parked in the front yard. With regard to the street, once the street is accepted, the street is a public way. This town that I am discussing does not accept subdivision roadways. Because they don't think the chapter 90 money worth, is worth the plowing and the maintenance. I mean, I don't know, but that's, that's their thought.
So, what I'm taking away, what I'm taking away from this is, at some point, the roads are going to be turned over to the town. The town is going to go and make sure the roads are in good shape and that things have been cleaned up. And at some point, 75% of the lots are turned over, the HOA could be turned over to one of us and then we would be responsible for taking care of it at that point.
Yeah, so we'll check your streets before we turn them over.
Yeah.
Just a quick note, with those pictures that you showed me, which that, that kind of disturbs me, you know, seeing that junk. However, you know...
Do you know how long that stuff has been there? It'll be on the 40, 40 years in March.
I'm kind of guessing...
The stuff was there before I moved in.
I'm kind of guessing that's on the Lemon property.
Yes, it was. Yes, it is.
What are you watching me? It's all my stuff, it's pickies. And he's dead.
Is it on his property or is it on yours?
His. This, this, this boat, is that boat still there?
Yeah, it is.
It doesn't look like it was constructed.
It was in back of, I used to see it as people moved in, they had to bake, they had the boats removed and you buried it further and further in the woods.
How did they get it from Gilligan's Island?
I guess they used the tides to roll it in on.
So, the, those pieces by the detention pond, those go in the detention pond?
That one they conceived.
But the boat, I didn't, I, I thought that when we, when we sold Lemon's property, that even when we bought it, they cleaned it all up. I don't know where that boat is, Gene.
It's in the back.
It looks pretty clean back there, I mean, we did, I thought we did a good job.
You know Steve's truck, sixty-seven? You know Colby's truck, sixty-nine? Going back to Colby's at sixty-nine, a little bit to the left.
I'll look back there. When we do one C, we'll bury your basket.
Yeah, I'll clean it up until he's going for the acceptance.
If you want, if you want to sign, you should go back.
We haven't yet. Yeah, yeah, this one's coming up.
Yeah, who's property is it on if it's in open space? If it's not open space, somebody else's private property.
I think the bottom line for the planning board is that we need to review the HOA and maybe add, add some more checklist to it.
Can we get a, a promise from you that any of that stuff that's on your property will be cleaned up before the first snow?
On my property?
Yeah.
I'll tell you what, I'm going to go look, but I'll clean it if I have, if you want me to. If you ask me to, I'll, I mean.
And before I.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm looking for. If it's not on your property, I know, you can't do anything about it.
If it is, yeah.
What, if it's on your property?
Just going, just going forward, I said earlier, when you go to look at a, a potential house that you want to, if you're interested in or whatever, and there is an HOA, I think that the potential buyer should be given the rules and regulations at that time and sign a piece of paper so that we wouldn't be having this discussion right now. I know that if I want to buy this property, there's an HOA, I have the rules and regulations, and that's it. Done deal.
We're going to try to modify our special.
It's up to the different builders or whatever.
We can put that in our, in our subdivision regs as part of an HOA requirement.
Unfortunately, that still won't affect already approved subdivisions. Because not, we can't do anything retroactively.
It wouldn't affect, who is, the whole, I think, part of this issue is that the HOA does not exist really until all the homeowners come together and decide what the HOA is going to be. So you can't really have a list of what you would, you know, like, what, exactly what the rules are, because they're not established until the HOA exists. It doesn't really exist.
I'm not asking for rules, I'm just asking to be notified and know before I purchase the property that the HOA exists on the.
You did say rules and regulations, that's what I'm responding to.
Well, I'm sorry, the town should make it a requirement that, you know, it's called full disclosure. And I don't think, I don't think it was full disclosure at the time that I signed my contract and a lot of other people.
So what I'm, what I'm saying is that the planning board can really only notify people that the HMO needs to be formed and it will exist.
I'm not asking the town for, for any type of, you know, like, saying, I might look at a piece of property, whether it be Elberg, whether it be Susie, whether it be Blair, whatever, if it's an HOA, they should have a, a sign saying, this is an HOA property, this is the packet of rules and regulations, and I have to sign. If I go, want to go forward, I was informed, and you know that I was informed.
I agree, Mary, I agree with you.
And that's all, nobody's asking Rutland or Holden or anybody.
My only point is that the rules and regulations don't exist when you look at a piece of property. The fact that there will be a HL, homeowners association needs to be formed, but that it's, they're actually formed by the people who own the property. They have to get together, you have to get together and say, okay, this is what we want, you know, and that's when the rules and regulations.
I'm confused. We never got together to form the HOA, I was told that there is an HOA, so who got together to form the HOA? Not the residents.
It hasn't happened yet.
On paper, it's already.
It's already on record. There is an HOA on record, so what Marilyn's saying is that, once there's, there's homeowners in there, then you can have the association with the homeowners. She's not saying it doesn't exist, it does exist on, on paper, it's, the, the actual agreement is on record, but the association needs homeowners before you can have one, I guess.
I'm just saying that if you do by year, you're going to have to form an HOA.
If I may, if I may, Mr. Chairman, that, that's, that's exactly why it has to be in your decision, because your decision is recorded. And so, the decision is recorded, and the decision is recorded prior to any sale of a lot. So, any sale of a lot will have your decision in the chain of title, and the closing attorney can review the chain of title and review the homeowners association and, or review the, the decision and know that a homeowners association is required.
But it's in the title anyway.
But it's actually.
That means it's in the, the requirement, homeowners association is in the, is in the title prior to the homeowners association being formed, if that's the case.
Right, the requirement that it be formed is what needs to be recorded.
Yes. And if you put it in your decision, it's automatically recorded.
I mean, I understand.
But I think the homeowners association, I have, I want to say this, that prior to having them, let's say that, you know that piece of grass that's around by your house there, if I could, if, right now, if you want that, if you want that maintained, and you want the homeowners association to do it, there's a way to do that. In the past, it would be up to some homeowner that would get together, that somebody would just mow it.
I just want to go start mowing stuff if I wasn't supposed to.
No, but you can't even do anything like that. The point is that, what the homeowners association allows is that if there's a guy, a guy has a detention pond in his backyard, that he's not the only guy responsible for that, or if there's off-the-street drainage. Normally, I've seen anything in the, in the street easement, the town will take care of, clean them and all that other stuff, but anything outside of that is the responsibility, the homeowners association. I don't know so much, I've never seen, like, I've never seen open space be maintained. I mean, I've seen a lot of open space subdivisions, but people don't normally, like, even, we got walking trails all through Central Tree Estates, I, I don't even know if you could find them now. I mean, it's, it's, I just, I just never seen people take care of it. But the point is that now there's a vehicle that does that, before there wasn't. So it doesn't just become one person's responsibility, which is why I think these are important.
So guys, sorry, sorry to interrupt, Cle, and I, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but getting back to her point on the decision, was that decision recorded already? And if it wasn't, I mean, it's not, you can go back and reverse it once all these COs have been, have been issued and people have closed on their houses, otherwise you're going to have to get subordinations on every single one of these houses, and, and good luck getting that.
We, we record the homeowners association, it's required in their regs that you record the homeowners association.
Before we approve this.
With, with the decision.
Yeah.
So, so that's recorded, so it's in the title already.
It's just not called out in the.
Yeah, they, they just didn't call it out in the decision.
And that's what Amy's suggesting we do in future, that we put it as part of our decision, and, and it'll be recorded with this.
With it, yeah.
As opposed to being a separate document that somebody has to go find.
Yeah.
That's what she's suggesting.
Thanks for the clarification, now that makes sense.
Turn their open space over to the town.
And I just hope that after all of this is done, that, you know, these things aren't bad things. I don't think these homeowners associations are bad things, they're all put in place for certain reasons, and if everybody knows about them ahead of time, if, you know, the salespeople that are selling the house, that work for Blair Realty, if they're asked specifically, it'd be a recommendation to answer, yes, there is, to help you, there is. We'll get you more detail, you know what I mean? So I don't know, like, maybe he didn't know, maybe the guy didn't know that there was, make sure he doesn't, you know, yes.
Now he does, and he tells people.
Put a positive swing on it so that it makes sense, so now maybe you guys can have nice trails around.
Why is it disappearing?
It disappeared, it's gone to.
Okay.
You're the new president?
I heard a volunteer.
I guess my biggest concern about this whole thing is, what if it fails? God forbid, it doesn't get dug out on a timely basis, and now we got to deal with DCR because it's flown into Millbrook and into Ware watershed. And first when he falls down, drowns, God forbid, I mean, there's always kids down and around it. The rail trail's right there, people come off, off the rail trail. Who is ultimately liable if, God forbid, somebody gets hurt?
It's really a lawyer's question. I mean, I, I don't. Number one, number two, I own it, right now. I own the open space, not anybody.
It's on all of our, going forward.
I own it. But anyways, it's a legal question, I can answer.
I won't even try.
Yeah.
Okay, I have to say, I've actually, I've kind of enjoyed this discussion, I think we got a lot of things kind of out in the open, think we got a lot of things clarified. I'm not saying we solved every problem that, that goes along with this, but, once again, I, I don't think that this homeowners association is, you know, a noose around anybody's neck. It's, some people may think of it as a inconvenience, but by the same token, I, I think there, there probably is some, some positive effects of having it as well. And, and I guess, obviously, since we do have a lot of people here from Bryce Lemon, I, I'd honestly suggest, because I think it's, it's maybe not inappropriate, in this particular case, for Mr. Blair to turn over the trusteeship of that homeowners association. I think maybe there have been enough lots sold or enough time has elapsed, and I'd encourage residents to make it an active homeowners association.
I have to say, I have to sign with every deed, I have to sign a disclosure that there's no money owed to the homeowners association, as the president homeowners association. Till I've sold those houses, I'm not turning it over to anybody. Because I got to go chasing down somebody to sign a deed, forget it.
So could you be, could you stand as the president, though, and then, like, elect additional people to help with the other things?
As long as I can sign that piece of paper when I sign the deed, I don't care, but I'm not going to chase anybody down.
It would be less work for you, for us, some, some other people to step in and help out with the other things.
Is it even necessary right now? Is it benefiting issues?
It looks like garbage when you drive into our neighborhood, still.
Well, that's my fault, I got to get that done. I mean, I'm not done with construction yet.
As long as everyone understands.
I'm not done with construction yet, I mean, that, that's what happens during construction, right? Yeah, it does.
I mean, maybe not, but I think we just want our voices to be heard, really, that's all.
You can scream at me, I'm good. Gene does.
Just quick, for the benefit of everyone here, portions of the subdivision are up for vote, hall town meeting?
Yes.
The ways have been laid out, you may want to clarify that and make sure everybody's aware of that process.
Yeah, actually, what, phase one, phase two, and?
No, just phase one and two.
Phase one and phase two.
And how, and more importantly, how that affects the detention pond process? Because we get a lot, we still get a couple calls about that at DPW and it's not ours.
Yeah, okay. The thing is, the detention ponds are not a part of this, this road acceptance that's coming up on town meeting. That will not happen until at least phase four, I believe.
So roughly from Scharneck to Oakley, to the terminus of Oakley? Correct.
Yeah. And all of Sonora and all of Oakley.
You know, I looked at the streets, sidewalks, curves, manholes, catch basins, that stuff. So has the person from your group.
Quinn, Quinn's done.
Yeah. But if you need me to look at it again, just let me know.
I think we already have a, do we have a report from you?
Not a recent one.
Yeah, we'd appreciate one. We did get one from Kyle Holker, the engineer.
Two of the people, sorry.
Yeah, okay.
He was first. Now, going back to turning it over, don't you guys have rules and regulations in place for that? Being three years or so many houses or no COAs will be issued until that's done, or after three months of failed reports?
That's a good point. Cle, that's a good point. You're saying you won't pass it over, but then it says the rules and regs that you have to after either three years or seventy-five percent of the houses have been, it has to be done.
Three months without reports, there's.
So maybe you can pass it over with rights to sign, you know what I mean? Like, you have to keep some sort of tangible right to make sure that that doesn't.
I have to sign those documents.
But if that's in there.
He could probably still say his, stay his president.
Right.
Or the, whatever, whatever trustee.
You just have a vice president that can do all the, all the work. You just be able to sign those documents at the end.
It's all good, yeah.
And, but the monthly reports that are supposed to be turned over to you guys in regards to you, the funds there, the.
I don't particularly remember that.
All the accounts and notes, you guys said two meetings ago that after three months of no reports, and he hasn't, you guys all said that he hasn't done one since it started, then there's no COAs that should be issued.
Oh, that's construction reports.
No, no, this was in regards to the homeowners association.
I don't, I don't believe so. I don't believe so.
I think those were the other construction reports, and there was some engineering documents we hadn't seen, and some stuff that we were looking to get from him, but I don't think.
That had nothing to do with the HOA.
It was brought up after the HOA and how there's been no, no one knows how much is there. And you guys were questioning that.
And it was another subdivision requesting that too, Rednell Estates.
Yeah.
We were, went to, for it's on.
So as far as street acceptance, everybody, phase one and phase two, phase one already was accepted once, but didn't get recorded properly by the town manager's office or the town administrator's office. Point is, come there and vote, so that the town has to follow the rules and the town has to maintain the rules. If you don't, I'm not doing it. So, somebody's going to do, I have to do phase three, so don't worry about that. But phase one, two, I'm done, I'm out. There's no provision for me to handle.
Yeah, you know, I, I, I was very, very surprised that the road acceptance at the last town meeting was, was turned down. And I didn't really get up and say much of anything at that time, but just since we have some of your residents here, you know, realize that we have subdivision rules and regulations that are pretty darn stringent. What I mean, you know, the road bed has to have X number of inches of this kind of gravel, this much gravel, you know, all of the drainage, you know, must meet, in many cases, national specs or at least state specs, and all of that sort of thing. And there are, like, three, three major reasons why we have those regulations. You know, one, is to build safe roads, you know, everything from line of sight to maximum grade on a road. That's an inside joke. And, and, and that sort of thing. But thirdly, that they are being built with the assumption that the town is going to accept them, and that they will be built, and they will be built to a, a specific occasions that will make them last. In other words, in three or four years after the town takes them, they're still not going to require any maintenance other than regular plowing and, and, and that sort of thing.
Thank you. Matt Chauncey, Pleasantville Road. I know nobody wants to talk about anybody getting hurt in one of these detention ponds that's not being maintained, but I don't think it's feasible to just, you know, kick the can down the road. I mean, we have council on, is there any type of, can that be answered? I mean, I, I wouldn't want to live in a place where potentially somebody could get hurt and nobody knows because we don't want to talk about it.
You're talking about a fence around the pond?
Well, everybody talks about, God forbid, something happens, right? So obviously, nobody wants to hear about that, right?
Right, I mean, we brought it up two years ago, and the answer was, teach your kids to swim, and everybody went.
Okay. And no fences are allowed by Rutland. I don't know why, decided in keeping with an agrarian countryside, whatever, so.
We would accept the fence if you get one around Long Pond.
Again, here we are joking about it.
I'm not, I'm not joking. I'm, I'm serious.
First of all, we're talking about, we're not talking about a detention pond right now. It's, this pond that's, that's there right now is for construction. It's maintained because it's picking up a ton of silt that was running off of there. That silt gets cleaned out on a periodic basis, but phase four, when I build it, is going to add more silt to that pond, so I can't finish the pond. The fence wouldn't be required till I turn it over to the town anyway, so the fence, once I build that pond to spec, it's got what's called, it looked like you're in construction, I don't know if you have it, it's got a low-flow channel in it. So that low-flow channel doesn't. So that low flow channel doesn't allow any water to stay in that pond. It's really, at that point, all it does is, it's used to slow the water down to detain it, and then let it go off at the same rate of speed and in the same place that it was going before the subdivision was built. Because when you build a subdivision, you create what's called impervious. You got roofs, you got driveways, you got sidewalks, you got roads. All that makes the water run so much faster, so it goes into the catch basins. And these detention ponds, they're made, they're set up to hold that water back and only let it go off the site at the same speed that it was going before. This detention pond you guys are talking about is full of silt, full of garbage, not garbage, but you know, all the stuff that ran off the site. That needs to be cleaned out, and, but I can't clean it until it's done being deposited into. So it's, these are premature conversations. It's part of construction right now. And I try, I put a construction fence around it. Kids get in there anyway. I, I mean, there's just not much you can do about the kids getting in there. I don't like them in there.
I understand how it works and the whole process, and I appreciate your explanation, but I just think these folks deserve an answer. On, God forbid, if something was to happen, who's on the hook? Worst case scenario, the thing gets clogged up in a hundred-year storm and somebody gets hurt?
I mean, it takes minutes for a kid to drown. There's water in there for 24 hours.
I can honestly say that I've never seen it happen.
Well, what if?
I mean, what if? I don't know what if. I mean, accidents happen all the time. I don't know what to tell you.
No, I'm just.
You know, I don't know, and I don't think there's any easy answer to that.
Amy, would you have any comment on this?
I hear crickets.
So, so right now, the free and each basin is private property. And once it's turned over to the town, the Massachusetts Torque Claims Act would apply, which means that the town would most likely have some kind of immunity.
But what about liability on the part of the homeowners?
It's private property until it's turned over to the town, which means that the child is trespassing.
And the kid shouldn't be around it anyway. Why are kids playing in our detention bond? If it's private property.
The problem is, is it's not getting turned over to the town.
Right.
So, Amy, this is, this is my question. As part of a homeowner's agreement that is responsible for maintaining the detention ponds, when they're turned over after phase four? Is five, whatever, when it's turned over to the homeowners association, is that liability then part of the homeowners association?
Again, it's private property, and so it would be the same as if you had a pool on your property. You know, a child from up the street would be trespassing if they came down and.
Amy, to your point, there is a law, though, that states that you have to have a fence around your pool in the event.
So I specialize, I specialize in land use. I specialize in land use. So I am not a personal injury attorney. I, I'm not liability. I, all I can say is it's private property. And so the town takes it over, and then the town has certain immunities. Because I practice municipal law, unfortunately.
I didn't mean to open a can of worms, specifically.
No, no, you're asking your question.
You're right to do that.
I thank you, because we've asked these questions two years ago, and.
Just a quick question. You mentioned, Mr. Anderson, about taking the HOA takes effect now? You're saying that Cleo should turn it over to us now? Or at the very end? I'm confused, because if we take it over now, he has, I call it section five, he calls it one C, Lemon, sir. There are houses to be built. So would the HOA be responsible for the runoff from that one C development coming down the road onto Woodside Avenue, whatever?
Homeowners Association is just there to charge you if the town chooses.
Well, if you mention something about the catch basins, the storm sewers. In fact, I think in the original HOA, it would be your responsibility now. I think it says, I think they're supposed to be cleaning them once a year. And I don't ever remember seeing anybody cleaning out those catch basins in the almost four years that I'm there. So I don't know.
The town forced us to clean them before we turned the roads over, so they're all clean.
But that's when you turn it over. But I'm saying, I think the HOA says now they should be cleaned once a year. And if you're the president of the existing HOA, whatever, they should be cleaned.
Town does the stuff in the road. Town does the stuff in the road.
I don't know, Chief Buckley could answer that.
So what is the question? Because I'm trying to understand, because we currently don't have control over the road.
Right, but you will, if they voted in. But any, like, in any town road, you clean out the catch basins?
We tried, you.
Yeah, so they do that, once it turns over. This stuff is for off the road normally. The homeowners association is for, like, if you have a drainage easement that has a pipe that goes through the yard, or if you have a detention pond in the yard.
So at the very end, you clean them all out?
I do before I turn them over. I have to do that.
Lots of different perceptions.
And section one C, when you start building that?
That's my problem, yeah.
Yeah, but that might come down to the HOA. If the owner says we take it over at that, some circumstance, Anderson takes it over at 75 houses. So if we take it over now, then it becomes our problem.
It's just an association. It's not, it doesn't have anything to do with the development or me developing the streets or anything like that. It's just, it's just an association where you get together, you meet, and you decide if you wanna charge for this and charge for that. It doesn't have anything to do with runoff or anything like that.
Well, there's a liability, so all these, all the dump trucks, all the cement trucks, all the supply trucks.
That's my liability.
They're all gonna be coming up, and somebody might get hurt. So is it the HOA's responsibility if a child gets hurt by one of those trucks coming in? That's why I'm just trying to get clear.
The only responsibility, the only responsibility that the HOA would ever take is on the parts that have already been accepted. Anything that's happening on any parts that have not yet been accepted by the town, the HOA has nothing to do with it.
Well, he's gonna have to come down those accepted roads from one C.
I just wanted to clear this up, because I've heard this three or four times, that the town's gonna take over the detention ponds. That isn't, my understanding is that is an untrue statement. It'll be part of the HOA. It's not the town taking over the detention ponds.
She's talking about ownership. So when I turn over to the town, I turn over an easement all the way around the pond. The town actually has ownership of that, but the maintenance is the responsibility of homeowners association.
That's all I wanted to clear up.
Once the town takes ownership of those ponds, the town has immunities towards lawsuits and things like that. And as for right now, anybody who goes on there, any kids, they're trespassing on my property, and that's not allowed. So it's a trespass, so they shouldn't be there anyway. I asked them not, you know, I've asked the kids a lot. They don't care what I say. Usually, they park their bikes in that porta potty. There's like eight of them in there the other day, and they're all, I can't get them out of there, no matter what I do. But, you know.
We actually called the police on the kids when they were playing in the pond.
Okay. I just wanted to make that clear.
Can I ask one? Hi, I'm Margaret Murphy. Excuse me, I'm 16, what's that I have? I just have a question. Would anything, in terms of the, you know, 75% developed and/or three years, whichever comes sooner, the turning over of it? Would anything prohibit current homeowners, working with Blair collaboratively, even if we sought our own legal opinions and counsel to kind of? What's interesting to me, from what Cleo is saying too, and I understand I'm not, I'm speaking to Holden right now, not Rutland, but that, that he's maintained presidency of the homeowners? I guess I'm just curious, you know, if we were to work collaboratively outside of the planning board, again, even if we had attorney representatives to kind of figure out, are we able to do that? Would anything prohibit us from doing that prior to it being turned over?
No, not at all. I have no problem with that.
Okay, because I'm kind of wondering if, you know, there are representatives in phase ones, two, and three. I would be happy to even work to kind of establish something, and we can, again, I'm just, maybe this is premature, but I'd rather move forward and kind of discuss our next steps, what the future's gonna look like.
Okay, whatever. But like they say, it's not for years.
It's not for years.
That's okay with me, man.
Okay, thanks, Clay.
Okay, do we have anything new or further on this? I don't know, we've been, let's face it, this has been like an hour and a half on this one topic, and we still have seven more items on our agenda for tonight. And I'm hoping we can be out of here before midnight.
Me too, because I'm most of the most.
Does anybody have any other, really things that they feel have not been brought to light at all here? Okay. And I'm just hoping that we've gotten a little bit of satisfaction out of this. You know, I'm not saying that we have solved all the problems, but.
Step in the right direction.
Step, yeah, I'll say that, step in the right direction, I think. Okay.
Only other thing, Norm, I was gonna ask, can Amy stand for a couple other of our, like, the A and R issue?
Uh, yes. Amy, are you available to stay on? We have an A and R coming up that we may need some advice on.
Sure.
Okay, long overdue. We have a public hearing at seven o'clock. Kenwood Court, special permit accessory dwelling unit. I have a question for the board before we start this. For years and years and years, at the start of every public hearing, I read the public hearing notice, okay? I have noticed most particularly, the board of selectmen does not. They just open the hearings and whatever, and I have kind of gotten away from doing that. Should I read the public notice?
I make a motion that Norm not read the public notice.
Mr. Chair, I would just ask, if you're not gonna be the, for a better, if you could just give the public enough information to know what it's about in case anybody has an interest on their matter and they've been waiting for this particular item, they now would know that it's being called.
Like the title of it?
What department, this is for two county courts, where accessory dwelling and a special permit under the petitioner, the Van Wormers. Does that affect, like, item number three on the agenda? I would just think that just in case, for as a caution.
So moved.
And you just did that, so.
But I think, that's an example of it, so the homeowners.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
You didn't even recall it? What else you got?
Well, okay, let's put it this way. We do not have, we do not have Hilltop on the agenda tonight. And I think if we had any other questions for Joe, it would have been about that.
Yeah, the Bridgell Estates, I saw the updates from Dave on getting reports, mainly the crossings. I didn't know if you'd had a chance to look at those or any, anything like that.
I haven't seen the reports, no.
Okay, we need to get those to you just to look over.
The work looks good.
What's that?
The work looks good.
Okay, I just wanted to get the reports to you and see if there's anything that's out of line. That's the only thing I wanted to make sure of.
So before you get off the subject or close debate, if you don't mind, the town does have a stormwater management permit from EPA. We are not compliant with the permit. There are several requirements which we failed to do. We've notified EPA, I've notified the board. We are talking to the board to come up with some more funding options to try and make that work. In case it came up, I've got some basics on stormwater management, the proposed stormwater utility, and a copy of that current file. So I'll give that to this group so you can have a look at. We have heard from some folks in enforcement at EPA Austin, so that could ultimately mean we have to do that much more with stormwater. So far, they've been quiet. Okay?
Let's hope they stay quiet.
Yes, that's state mandated unfunded, correct?
Federal.
Federal, unfunded.
It went to court twice, and the permits are valid now. They've been valid since 2018. So the court, the fight's already happened. It happened for 20 years, that part's over. We have to do it.
So it's only a matter of when?
It's, we're supposed to be doing it now. It's just a matter of when we get either ordered, either ordered or fined.
Yeah. And then does the fine exceed the cost of the two people who need to do that? Four, thanks.
I have one thing that I would like to, from Mr. Buckley leaves. I'd like to go and see Mr. Buckley about two special permits. Joint driveways. Common driveways, and I put in that have one of the leveling surface right near 68 on one of them, and the other one onto Wachusett Street. And I would like to talk to him a little bit about it, because I feel that what is rough, and it's only rough right now, it's not, not quite up to what I was hoping to see. And I would like to be able to go and talk to him about it and find out his opinion.
That's off 68?
One's on 68, and the other one's on Wachusett Street. Joint dri, you know.
Common driveway. For leveling surface for a driveway cut.
Before you, you know, come out onto Wachusett Street, I want a leveling surface. So if you're, if you're in a truck or something like that, and you're in the snow and all that, I want to see the bulk of the truck almost level.
This came up on Kenwood, and all public works can comment on is what's in the limits of the right of way. That's why, by means of example, if you're cutting in a driveway, and the driveway's gonna be a couple hundred feet long, and you're gonna leave it in gravel, we ask that the piece that meets our paved road is paved, the apron's paved. And we can dictate what happens within the limit of the right of way. Once you get past the right of way, it's out of our purview. Now, over on Kenwood, we had a couple driveways that went like this, either down into hollow or up too high. And I believe the building inspector's taking that off or trying to come up with a way to permit that properly. So I think you're better off with this. Does that answer your question?
Well, if he's already got two at another place, maybe these two add on.
Because once, my point is, once you come off the edge of the road, I have no limit, I have no authority. It actually falls to plan. Not planning on.
So Dave's gotta be the one who answers that question.
And I think he may ultimately put it back on you to have some, to have a regulation changed.
Okay.
Or a bylaw put in place to address it. There's some common sense stuff on grades, you're correct. There should be a landing area, there should be some grades on the private property to protect the homeowner's interests. But is it written down someplace? No.
See, I always thought it was up to the D P W, but like you say, once you get off.
Once you get outside my road, there isn't a lot I can do.
Correct.
So I need them to show me where the end of the road is.
Where's the road?
Wachusett Street.
Which piece?
It's just up from 68 going up the hill towards Princeton.
Couple feet off the guardrail. Maybe five feet off the.
No guardrail there, but okay. All right.
It's a 40-foot right of way.
Take a look.
You have control of the 40 feet, correct?
Yeah.
That's all you've got control of.
Correct.
Okay, back to our special permit application for.
Director Buckley?
Yeah, I think so.
Are you sure you're all set?
I think so.
I think this would've been good. Thank you. And I'm glad you guys, I'm glad you took this on, because we get a lot of calls from those folks. You did the best you could.
Okay. This is Mr. Van Wormer?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So we have an application for a special permit for the accessory dwelling unit.
This is part of the new house bill?
New construction.
When I read it, that's what I gathered.
Completeness?
Yes, we have, so for the application, I would say generally complete. I would ask Mr. Van Wormer to just go over his supplemental, what you provided to the board, what you're trying to do, and defines the fact that you provide a specifically funded accessory dwelling unit.
Yeah, you wanna just run through the, like, the design drawings or whatever?
Sure.
Yeah, I think probably.
Just show you what we're looking to do.
Yeah, so this is your, maybe just wanna start with your mother's nap, and then I'll just scroll through.
Yeah, so that's our lot right there, the white right there in the middle was sort of the shaded area. We're right on Kenwood Court, or Kenwood Drive. Kenwood Court, the dead-end road. Me and my wife are just looking to build a single-family keep, my mother...
Can you go back to that?
Yep.
The lot, lot plan, please?
So that's us.
Your seven, correct?
Yep.
All right, where's the, is that the common driveway on the upper side?
There is, there's two lots behind us that share a common drive, we are not part of that. We are gonna have our private driveway.
Okay.
But yeah, that long, sort of skinny rectangular, that, to the left of our lot is a common driveway. There's gonna be a house behind us at, I think it's E, and then another one at whatever nine.
Nine, yeah, all right.
Yep.
But you have access to the Kenwood Court, Kenwood Road, that's where you're coming out on?
Yes.
Okay, good, good idea.
Yep.
Thanks.
So yeah, that, those are our, those are our plans.
You're building this house for the first time?
Yes, new construction.
New construction, which includes the accessory dwelling, it's part of the construction for the first time.
Yep, accessory dwelling would be over the garage.
I did have a question that I couldn't figure out, is what's to this side of the two garage doors?
That is a deck.
Underneath it?
Nothing, it's, it's just, so there's gonna be, there's gonna be an entrance to the accessory dwelling. You can access through that garage, you can access the front of that.
Right, I understood all that, but I just wasn't sure if there was anything under the deck.
Nope, nope, just a deck.
So there is access from the main building into the accessory?
Yes, so if you go, so I think it's actually, so you can see that there's the front door on the porch, and then there's gonna be that front door sort of between the garage and the house, that's a mudroom. There's access to the accessory dwelling through the mudroom.
And there's stairs that go up to it?
Yep.
And there's, there's a second egress on the deck?
So yeah, there's, there's actually three, three egress. One directly into the garage, one into the mudroom, and then one onto the exterior deck.
Okay.
You gonna talk to the floor plans and compliance with the requirements of the bylaw?
Yes, so, I think I had a whole one right up on it. So yeah, we have, yeah, so our house is, I think, a little over 2,300 square feet. The accessory is gonna be 750, which I believe, I think in the bylaw, I have it in here somewhere, you can't exceed, is it 40% of the total square footage of the primary residence, which we don't. So there's no issues there. Yeah, we're at 33% of the primary dwelling.
Do you know where bedrooms comply?
Number of bedrooms comply, yep. Four bedrooms, we're gonna have a four-bedroom septic. We're gonna be on, obviously, well.
What depends on the apartment itself?
What's that? One bedroom, one bedroom accessory dwelling, and then three in the main residence. We have all our permits, everything's been approved. We have everything from the Board of Health, building permit. Obviously, the original building permit was issued for the two-family. I don't want it to be a two-family, so that's why I came in and wanted to apply for this special permit.
Dave, do we, do we need to, I think if I remember right in the bylaw, it said stairways have to be covered. Is that because there's a stairway inside and it's covered? Does that comply, and this is an accessory stairway?
So, this bylaw is gonna need some minor adjustments. Do you have advice for the board on the prior? The first, special permit for accessory dwelling for 25 Arlene. We did point out that there was an exterior access that could be seen, but we discussed that with the building commissioner. He feels that that is an overreach, that the building code does not support that, and that the general intent was that maintain the look of a single-family dwelling. And that that's not really enforceable under the building code. That was put in originally for aesthetic reasons. I think that's something we're gonna be looking to change in the future. I do believe that since there's three means of egress, it more than satisfies the requirement. So I believe the board could just make an observation that that does not apply here, and we will then be looking to just strike that in the future, especially given the advice of the building commissioner.
I just wanted, I saw that and I just wanted to make sure, because I remember that was in the bylaw.
But the board...
I'm okay with it, trust me. This overall design is outstanding. I just, I just wanted to make sure that there were no I's undotted and T's uncrossed.
The situation is obviously identical to our...
Yeah.
And the reason originally we did that because we didn't want any...
Slipping falls? Yeah, with ice and all that stuff, so, okay, good enough, thanks.
I used to be an occupational therapist before I retired, and you're smiling like maybe you know what that is?
I do, yeah. I'm not one, but I do know what it is, yes.
Okay, and one of the things that we were trained in, I was trained in in school, was looking at floor plans, and there's one issue that I have, maybe if you come over and direct me pointing it out to you. It's right here at the top of the stairs.
Yes.
Where the washer dryer is.
Yep. So right here to the right of the stairs, yep.
And my issue is that it's very close to the stairs here, I don't know what kind of a, what's this, is that a partial wall?
Yeah, so it's just gonna be a partial wall. It's not shown on there, but there is going to be a door at the top of the stairs.
Oh, okay.
So yeah, it isn't shown on the plans, but actually it's one thing we did talk to the builder about, and there will be a door at the top of the stairs.
Yeah, I was really worried about somebody getting, standing up out of the, getting the clothes out of the washer.
No, yeah, that's a good point, it is actually something we talked to him about, because we wanted, we wanted the, her, her unit to be pretty much completely separate, you know, to keep kind of everyone's privacy. So yeah, there will be, there will be a door.
So is the door gonna open which way?
Um, that's actually something that he's gonna, I don't know, I mean, I'm not a builder, but...
I just got the picture, and I have not met your mother, she's probably nothing like, I think she was, you know, this kind of gray-haired woman getting her laundry out there and someone opens the door.
Yeah. I don't know, there might end up having to be some sort of rearranging, I guess, I really don't know, but...
You know what would take care of that? If you switched the closet with the washing machine?
Yeah, so there's an option.
That would kind of put the dryer in your kitchen, but in a virtue. That would make that a lot more stereotypical.
Right.
Other than that, I agree on it.
Norm, I've read through this, and this is as detailed as we can get.
Yes, yes.
It's even got layouts for structural stuff that we really didn't need, but thanks.
Just wanted to give everything I had, so I have a...
No, no, it's got foundation layouts.
Thank you.
Keep it up, I may ask for everybody to do that.
You never say that to me.
No, no, we've always gotta ask for more from this guy. No, I, when I read through the application too, it's got the building permit, everything here, I don't find anything wrong, so I don't have any questions.
No, there, there was really, we designed this, like, everything was kind of designed from the very start to actually be, like, an accessory dwelling. It was sort of just the building permit was inherently called as a multi-family, so it was, I didn't realize we had to go through this whole process to do this, so it's kind of why we're doing it after the fact. But yeah, everything was sort of put together with sort of everything in mind.
All right. Just a question on the, if you can refresh my memory, if we had it in that bylaw originally with, you know, this is saying that it's number two, Kenwood Court, you know, say an ambulance is called.
What's that?
Say an ambulance is called for your mother-in-law, right? How are they gonna know to go above the garage? Is it 2A Kenwood Court, is it?
Uh, I don't...
Did we ever talk, discuss, you know, we talked about ambulances, end of the driveway, there's gonna be an address, the physical address is 2 Kenwood Court, and I was there. We have additional, you know, is her mailing address gonna be 2 Kenwood Court?
Yeah, it's gonna be 2, 2 Kenwood Court. Because I believe the, the two lots behind us are 2A and 2B.
Kenwood Court.
2 Kenwood Court, so I, I don't...
We really have four residences on three lots, right?
Mr. Chair, just to comment on this, so this is categorized as a single-family dwelling with an accessory apartment, it's not a two-family. See, as a result, it gets one address, because it's not a two-family.
Yeah.
If you kind of call for emergency services, I assume that someone's gonna be there to guide you.
Yeah, I didn't know if there was any guidelines that we put forth, or should we put forth?
No, it's not a two-family, a single-family.
Because we were allowing the existing property owners that have houses that they could add to their existing house and accessory apartments, but not take out a new address. I thought, I know we were discussing that in the bylaw subcommittee when we were talking about this.
Yeah.
But I hadn't come up...
That is a good question.
Well, the thing is, we were requiring internal access to this accessory building.
Yeah, that's true too. That was part of the bylaw that they gotta have egress.
The building and just...
But being that you're new to this too, it's interesting to see, I would, I look at this house, and if I'm coming up, there's two front doors. One front door is primarily probably for her, but you guys will probably still utilize it and go left or go...
Uh, so she's gonna either go, she's gonna use primarily her deck, and then there's gonna, there's a door into the garage, she'll be using primarily either the garage entrance or the deck, and then the mudroom and the front door are gonna be primarily ours.
That's a breezeway, basically, you're putting there.
Yeah, it's a breezeway, that's how the, the two spaces are gonna be connected.
I think there is a program in town where you can ident, inform the fire department?
Yeah, if there's ever an emergency.
And police department, yeah.
You know what the setup is.
It might not be a bad idea just to let them know that there's another, because they, yeah, they might have a database in there or something too. Wonder whether solicitors will go, she's gonna get it or you're gonna get it? Who's selling cookies, which door do you go to, right?
Both.
Right?
Current counts are good.
That was just my only thing, is that, not that you want, not that I'm looking for it to be noticeably
Yeah.
a separate residence, but in case of emergency.
Sure.
Did you wanna have a number, a secondary, other than that, I have no other.
Any other questions, comments, any questions, comments from the public?
So you have a motion to close the hearing?
I would accept that.
Second?
Any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Are we ready to vote on the special permit?
Aye.
I don't see any particular reason not to.
I make a motion that we accept the...
Approved.
Approve the special permit as laid forth. I have four on my agenda to make, please.
I'll second that.
Item three, 2 Kenwood Court. I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Now you gotta wrap this guy up to do this.
Yeah, because the actual document has to be signed.
Oh, yeah, I do, so, yeah, I just, I don't know what happened to this.
Right, so your decision will be drafted, it'll be signed at an upcoming board meeting.
Okay.
And then it'll be submitted to the town clerk's office for recording, and it'll be notified if it occurs.
All right, awesome, thank you, I appreciate it.
20 to 30 day appeal period?
Yes, it's a special permit, so it has a 20-day appeal period.
All right. Are we gonna do four and five together, or?
Well...
Because I think five goes in front of four, that's my opinion.
Is there some discussion with the board, if you'd like to take these concurrently?
Yeah, I, I think.
That's my opinion, I'll address the board's thing, but I think we should clear up this A and R before we go into doing a hearing.
Okay, well, so let's start, let's start out and open the public hearing on a petition from CB Blair Builders for a two-lot common driveway at Zero Main Street, basically across from Olivia Way of Central Two Estates. And in conjunction with that, they also filed an A and R plan, and I think we can take a look at both of these together. And I guess, actually looking first, maybe at the A and R plan. I guess there's some question as to frontage.
That's your own script.
On these particular lots. And I think this is maybe, Amy, where we're gonna be looking for you to...
You have the A and R?
Yep.
I have the A and R.
Okay.
Was that the site plan? I signed A and R. Uh-oh. It's got the same stuff on it, but it's... A and R is more thorough.
Oh, it did have a...
There it is.
Oh, there you go.
I'm sorry, you got it.
It's, it's miniaturized, an 11 by 17, and our packet, here it is, it's miniaturized. There it is.
We're gonna make an open-up.
That's better. All right.
So, we have two lots on this piece of property.
Yeah.
We got frontage here, and here, this big lot, and the strip going all the way down here, that's 50 feet, so there's actually frontage in three places, but the minimum frontage requirement meets right there for this lot. It meets the 150 feet, so I can hang over there. So we've got frontage, it's two lots. The perimeter of this property goes like this, like this, all the way down there, all the way back, all the way around, like, like so. That's the perimeter. We split off this lot, which is pretty obvious, it's got frontage starting from this tick mark here, which is kind of blurry, but you see it there, to right there. That's your minimum, because this little half-moon is not right of way. It's actually a piece of land that the DCR decided they needed, for whatever reason. So there's no frontage coming from Main Street to this part of the lot here. The frontage is here, on Main Street, because this is a DCR piece, this is Mass Highway, DOT. So that's lot number one. We've got 3.1, 3.61 acres, frontage on the setback line of, if you read that, it's actually, I can't read it on here, it might be memorized.
That's an illegal sponsor.
434 feet of, of frontage on that, on this particular lot. Then this lot, we have frontage here, and we have, if you slide that, there, we have...
Saying 99.7 feet of frontage?
There's 99 at the street, but at the setback line, we have 154 and 98, that's the easement line, you gotta slide it up the page. But the frontage is down 150 feet, which is the minimum requirement, is over on this sector. Right here, frontage, 150 feet, 26 at setback line, right here, that's your requirement that you require for frontage.
So Julian...
So we have area and frontage for both of these.
Can you show me on here, or can I see through?
Yep, so right here, we have 150 feet.
The frontage had to be on the street.
It is on the street.
At the, at the setback.
At the setback.
It was on the curve, at the setback.
So that's where we have that there.
And that is where...
But this big, big piece, I'm struggling with lot one setback.
Then at this one...
Lot one, we have 150 feet, we have 150 feet right on the street.
That's...
That L is equal to 150 feet.
Okay.
So at the setback line, we have more than enough, because it kind of goes screwy through there, so that doesn't, we have more than 150 feet, so...
I'm good with that.
So we have that. So that's, we've got here, here, then we have this whole section, we've got 99.7 feet on the street, but you're, we're not, really don't need it, because we have here and here, and we have another on Prescott Street, another 50 feet.
So tonight, we're discussing lot one, correct?
And this, these two. Yep, we're creating two lots out of this, we used to have, what, five lots?
It used to be five lots, so until we found out there's that illegal spite strip.
This is a spite strip.
But that's a spite strip keeping out of there. The DCR grabbed from the state. I tried to buy it, and the DCR grabbed it from the state. When they put that road in, that was all part of the, out of all part of the road, then they cleaned up the easement, so it's exactly 10 rods, and that, and that left that spite strip. Well, they gave it to the DCR, so it wiped out all my frontage.
We had a plan with this board that this was split up into five lots with that all frontage, and then we went to Conservation Commission, and that came up, they pulled it out, they ran it out of the hat. We couldn't find it. Yeah, there it is, one, two, three, four, five. There were five. And they said, well, no, we own this, you don't have any frontage. What do you mean you own this? It's common with the Mass, the high road, the road layout shows it, it's part of a road layout. And what was it, 2012, 14?
They sold it to the DCR.
Somehow, but they gave it to the... Internally, the Mass DOT...
Transferred it to the DCR.
Transferred it to the DCR. For what purpose does the Department of Conservation and Recreation have that piece of property? Maybe they're gonna put some tents up, I don't know, so I can't build that?
Maybe they're gonna put some tents up, I don't know, so I can't build houses? Don't worry. So, I'll find a way.
So that's where we, we, we have all, this is all frontage, and down on that other road is all frontage, so.
But.
And then a piece right here.
I guess getting away from the illusionary frontage is what I wanna do.
Okay.
Lot two, you have enough hundred and fifty foot frontage on Main Street to cover lot two, correct?
Yes.
That's all I wanted to hear.
Absolutely.
That's all I want.
Right there.
And this one has.
I don't really care about this, as long as you got one fifty there and you got one fifty.
We do. Yes, we do.
Yeah, I, that was my concern, cause I, I didn't see that half moon where it was, where the, call it the point of control goes from the DCR to, uh.
That was real.
Okay.
And it was very difficult, I mean, Anita, no one in the town that records knew that that happened. On the assessors' maps, I was like, what are you talking about? And we're, and we're handing the deeds from the DCR.
Oh, yeah, we own it.
Better off than what it was.
Yeah. So. So now, the, the only question to me in my mind is the wetlands.
We have an order of conditions from the, um, Concom.
In other words, then you actually have access.
We have access from here. We have access from, well, let's, let me see the site plan.
No, there's no wetlands in front of the access.
No. So, there's no, you're right, there's no wetlands down in here. Wetlands are way down, like so. So, just frontage there, that we're, we're gonna do a common driveway there to avoid. We have another minor issue, is we have to deal with DCR, cause there's a brook over in here. So we're avoiding dealing with the watershed. So we have, that's the best place to bring the driveway in.
The only place. Yes, I thought Moose Crossing had Worcester Brook underneath it. About sixty-eight.
We're putting two houses. No, that's, uh. Isn't that Muscat Park?
No.
Muscat Park.
That's the GIS. I guess everything.
On Concom, when the. You and Mr. Bacon were doing this, that was Worcester Brook that came across the road and.
And just Moose Crossing. Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know why they got it here. That's, this is from the GIS, I have nothing to do with this, I've been printing it.
I guess I'm okay with the A and R, conforms to.
It seems to.
Yep.
Uh, Amy, any opinion on this, from what you can see?
Um, no. If, um, so, if it appears that he has the hundred and fifty feet of frontage, I guess the only question would be the wetlands. Um, but it looks to me, from the site plan, it looks to me that the wetlands are all on the left side of the property.
Right, and the back, the bottom. It's down in here and up that way.
Yep.
That's where.
This line is what?
That's a hundred foot buffer, I believe.
Yeah, that's.
No, yeah, hundred foot buffer. Hundred foot buffer.
But, but they'll be accessing the property from the right side, right?
Left.
Where the frontage is?
No, they're gonna access from the left, Amy, over where the wetlands is.
Oh.
With the common driveway.
Oh, I'm sorry, I see that now. Um, so you have, and you have an order of conditions from the commission?
Yes, we do.
Well then, I guess he's got, then he's got access.
It appears.
Yep.
This illusory frontage thing is bugging me. Ed comes up on everything.
Yeah.
Lost out to two, so.
Because it went so, it went so, in my opinion, it was not handled in Rutland per Mr. Deval Patrick's book that he had for A and Rs for many years. So it was time for us to come in line for what the state had put out there.
Yeah.
Am I wrong, Amy?
If you don't use.
You're not the only community.
Okay.
And, and, you know, the illusory frontage is, um, it's becoming, um, in my opinion and my experience, it's becoming more and more of a thing because, you know, land is becoming less available. And so, um, developers are becoming way more creative.
That's my middle name.
Yeah. Your first name. We've seen a lot of creativity.
Yeah. I was taught to use the frontage you have, because it's already there. It already has access, it already has maintenance, it's already there. Why would I not use all that frontage, even if, in this case, I got a common driveway coming away, instead of proposing a new road? We just saw what happens when you do roads. This is a room full of.
Angry people.
Angry people. Let's use what we got first, and then.
Yeah.
Go to that. So, but that's.
I'm, I.
That was a professor I had.
The A and Rs, I'm fine with. I don't have any issues. We doing the hearing or the A and R?
Well, I opened the hearing.
Okay.
We're doing both.
Okay. Well, from the.
However I would say that.
So if you're not gonna pump, you're gonna put the stuff like that.
No, I'm not gonna pump. It's too far.
Yeah, forget it.
And they had real good soils. It was very sandy, gravelly.
I guess from the common driveway, I don't see anything, it's by right, there's two, it's not three.
Nope, only two.
I am kinda curious, because you filed a.
No.
Okay, site plan review.
Yep.
Was it here?
Do we not have to do a site plan review?
Yeah. But I also, I saw an application.
You saw an application for a special permit.
Well, special permit was in error.
It consolidated together into the site plan.
Okay.
And we treated it as a site plan advertising accordingly, because it's two lots.
Okay.
So you know the special permit, because that's not the correct application.
That's what I was.
Yeah, cause if we, if we had three houses on the common driveway, then we need a special permit.
Yes.
It is, except for that, it provides the review criteria that apply to the common driveway situation. So there is information that we do need.
Right, well, we didn't need it for this, because it is a two driveway.
We still have to show that, doesn't exceed five hundred feet.
Was there a fee that, I think it was five hundred dollar fee that you had to pay for that?
Yeah, the fee is correct.
For a special permit that we don't need?
No, it's a site plan.
Site plan.
You submit two applications, one of your applications is not the right application to submit, so we just took it all as a site plan. We put all the information together. Some of the information we do need regarding the link to the driveway and other things.
So we're all set.
Except there's no fee for the A and R.
Uh, yeah, I was gonna say, you said we have.
Uh-oh.
And we don't have the whole one's association agreement either. That was, that was requested.
Uh-oh.
Or the con, yeah, the common driveway.
What is the fee for the A and R?
Yeah.
We never know how to figure it out. You know, leave it up to Norman.
Is it changing five back to two?
No.
Well, that A and R wasn't, that A and R was already approved, so.
You're actually right.
And that was already approved, so there's five, and now we're changing it back.
Changing one, creating one.
Oh, you're being generous.
Three hundred, two hundred dollars.
Being generous. I'm, I'm considering the porta potty as part of that cost.
And finally gone, by the way. Emma confirmed it, the lady sitting next to me, she said, it's gone.
Alright.
Is he agreeing with the.
And you need the HOA for the common driveway? I saw that was approved, I don't know. Oh, yeah, well, yeah, so.
Okay, is there any further comments? Particularly on the common, the common driveway?
So we gotta check already for the site plan?
Yes.
Yep, but not for the A and R.
And how much was that?
Five hundred.
Five hundred.
No, the five, five hundred's.
Tickets on that spreadsheet I gave you the other day.
Oh, it was?
Yeah, cause I was the most current.
Thank you.
Hundred. Fifty each.
Norm, I'm sorry, what did you say the fee was for the A and R?
Four hundred.
Four hundred.
Being wicked generous.
He wants, he wants, uh.
So, just, this is a, this is a curi- yeah, exactly. This is a curiosity question. I see a guardrail there. Are you gonna have to get the state to remove that, or is that a town guardrail?
It's the state.
No, we gotta get the state.
Okay, just curious.
Just do it.
It has nothing to do.
We have to get a state contract.
Oh.
Okay.
I'm sorry, does the guardrail prohibit access?
Yes.
Oh, then there's no front, then there's illusory frontage.
Oh, my God. Alright, let me stop right there. I just lost my mind. Right over here.
So there's a case, there's a case.
There is guardrail that's open, that actually has a turn in, it's on the site plan.
Yeah, I see it right here.
That, and the reason why we don't use that one is because the two hundred foot zone. So, we would have to go to variance, we don't, over there. See that? See how they turn in?
Yeah.
That's there, that exists.
So we do have access to it. So it's not illusory.
That exists, that physically exists, you could drive a truck into there.
That, that.
But I didn't wanna deal with that one there, because I don't wanna deal with the DCR, I wouldn't have to. So we split.
But Amy, the guardrails can be moved.
No, so there's a case that says that if it's a state guardrail, then, um, it is illusory frontage, because at, right now, it's there, and it, it is blocking access.
Yeah, there's no guardrail, it's only one little piece.
But it's open.
Yeah.
Amy.
But in front of it, where, where the bigger, the other lot is, there's none. There, there is a gap in the guardrail.
There's a gap.
There's a guardrail in front of where they wanna have access now, but slide down seventy feet, and there's a guardrail opening that leads to the property. So there, there, there's sort of a. I don't know how to even explain that.
It's there, it physically exists. I can drive onto this property from Main Street.
Is.
Without any obstruction.
So I guess my question is, is the applicant forced to use the guardrail as part of the design that's opened up right now?
I just gonna take it down tomorrow.
So you, so when you're at the A and R process, which is where you're at right now, you are not looking to design the project. All you're looking for is if they have the adequate frontage, and if they have adequate access. And so, um, the case is, um, it's a case, it's in Jamaica Plain, and it, it's on, I can't remember, I think it's Jamaica Plain Boulevard or something, where there's guardrails on the side, and the guardrail, it, it was a state guardrail, and it was blocking the entire frontage. So, the court ruled they had no, they did not have access, because even though they said that they were negotiating with the state to get rid of the guardrail, they didn't have it at the time, and so they, they ruled in favor of the planning board for illusory, um, frontage. So, if there is, if there is a gap in the guardrail, and they are able to use that as frontage, as, I mean, as access, I'm sorry, as access to get into their lot, then, then they have, they have access. Now, we also have to combine this with the wetlands, so.
No, we're fine.
Is the gap crossing wetlands where they're allowed to cross the wetlands?
No.
You got no wetlands?
No, no.
No, there's.
Okay, so there's no wetlands, okay.
No, there's wetlands. No, it's just a buffer, it's a buffer.
We can go in just like this.
And curve, curve that way.
Yeah. But I don't wanna deal with this, so we're gonna go to the state and get this moved.
So from the A and R perspective, we're okay.
We have it.
From the design perspective.
If he can get in, if he can get in, and, and the width that's open is enough for a common driveway, then he has access.
It's there.
The measurement on that? I'd like to go look at it tomorrow. I'd like to see it.
The measurement's on there.
It's scaled, yeah. There's enough for a common driveway there.
Oh, this is Tim. He's old school engineering. I don't wanna do old school engineering, I'd like to see it.
Yeah. I'll do you, not even old school. You have this right here, Tim.
I know, I just don't have a ruler to look.
You just take your pen, put it against that, there's twenty feet.
Yeah.
Bring it over there, and you'll see.
Yeah, I call it real close to twenty feet, so you've got the access. Your common driveway is a little less than twenty feet, so.
Eighteen.
Yeah, the answer is, from post to post on the guardrail, you've got access.
We got, we got it in there, we're gonna do the survey there, we don't have a Main Street.
Close, eighteen or nineteen feet, Kevin, so that. I mean, if you, if you guys wanna, or if the board wants to look at it.
I'd like to look at it. Just.
I don't have an issue.
I think there's a lot of sensitivity over this piece of property too, just because of the past houses that have gone into, the amount of wet. But I know, I get it. I'm not saying it, but there's just a lot of other.
Well, you got Concom approval.
I got Concom.
No, I know, I know, and I'm not, I'm not for one second, I'm just saying, just the sensitivity that was around, there was other houses that went in there. I know that there was a lot of, how were they, how were they, how was there?
Because we met the law, we met the law, we met the law.
What, what houses?
If I can, just.
In two towns. One was in Holden, one was, two were in Rutland.
If I can.
I take offense to your, your, your comments.
Okay.
Glad you take offense to my comments. Can I finish what I was trying to say, cause they didn't even let me finish my comment before you interrupted me four times?
Okay.
You good?
I'm good.
For me.
Okay.
As a resident of this town.
Yeah.
And a member of the planning board.
Yeah.
If somebody comes to me.
Yeah.
I wanna cross my Ts and dot my As.
I agree with you.
So I would like to take a look at this.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So can I look at it tomorrow?
The same way I did your property up the street.
Can I look at it tomorrow?
Alright, it's not my call, that's.
So we'd have to continue this if we did that, cause we couldn't, cause A and R, and it'd have to be the next meeting before we approved it. That's gonna be an applicant question. Am I wrong, Norman?
Can I ask a question? So I don't have to come back. I mean, I, I hear what you're asking, and I'm fine with you doing what you're asking. Can you do something where you hold on to it, and Kevin just says, yeah or no? I mean, but before you vote yes, and one of them votes no, then I don't care.
I mean, but before you vote yes and one of them votes no, then I don't care. You know what I mean? I just don't want to come back. I respect what you want to do, but if, if we knew what this was ahead of time, you could have, I mean, crazy girl thought of the way up here. Go right by it.
If I had heard all these, this is what these meetings are about. Educating myself.
But we've got on-
And I'm never allowed to educate myself because decisions are just made and it's just tomorrow's another day, so.
But, but Kevin, we surveyed it. We surveyed it, I prefer that we, we vote on it. I, I prefer that we would, if you, if you don't mind.
I'm sure everybody would.
It's surveyed and it's, the survey is, I mean, stamped by an engineer, it's correct. It's, it's a given, it-
It's not a given, Mr. Blair, unfortunately.
How, how are you even doing any better than a surveyor though, just with your eyes?
Well, from the standpoint of what Amy brought up-
The survey is correct.
Is that the, the common dri, and again, this is the design, not the A&R. The design shows the road in one place and then this meeting we came up with-
But you're looking at an A&R,
Okay.
looking at lots and then you have a drive, a common driveway. So, we need to get Mass Highway curb cut permit before he does anything. And they may say, use the opening that's there already and we'll be back to you to say we moved the common driveway.
But then that's the design, not the A&R.
That's the design, that's the site plan.
Amy?
So, thank, thank you, so, um, and I, I apologize that I, I don't know, the, the planning board member on the end, I'm sorry, he keeps getting interrupted and I can't. So, I think what he was saying is that you guys are considering the common driveway entrance as shown on the plan, which is not what you are considering. You're considering the common driveway entrance, which is shown where there's no guardrail.
No.
And so, it is very important to make sure that there is adequate access right there because that is the only access to the property right now. Um, so,
Thank you.
we have to take, we have to take away the Commonwealth, we have to take away anything like that. So, right now, we're, we're in, we're in this bubble and we can only look at what's there now. And so, we have this, we have this 20-foot opening where there's no guardrail. So, this board has to be comfortable that there is adequate access right there. So, you know, we have to make sure that there's no, there's no slope that goes right down or, or wetlands or- So, so I think, I think that's what the planning board member was trying to say, but again, he kept getting interrupted, so I, I think that's what he was trying to say, which I agree with.
Introduce yourself to her.
My name is Kevin Jarvin, you're right, I always get inter, I always get interrupted in this board, so thank you for making that statement that I always get interrupted, because you're right, I do.
Um, all I'm going to say is, the Form A creates lots. Whether Cleed builds a house on that lot or not, it's a legal lot in the town of Rattle. The common driveway that we're showing you for access is a special permit. That's what we're going to get, we have to get a permit from the Mass Highway for a street opening. That's, that's, has, it happens on every piece of land that you do, whether it's a town street permit or a Mass Highway. So, the two, I don't want to mix the Form A with the special permit for the driveway.
So, what we're saying is on the Form A that we're showing you,
We have access.
is adequate access to put a driveway through the guardrail. Forget about the common driveway, that's two separate things. The common driveway has nothing to do with this. We're telling you and we show it on the plan, there's access through the guardrail, through the, on the frontage-
To a lot.
To the lot, each of them. Period.
So, we can endorse the A&R.
And hold a special permit.
Hold a special permit.
Till you look at it.
Well, it's site plan review.
It's only a site plan review.
That way you can get to all the stuff with it.
Yeah.
That's, that's totally fair.
If you want to do it that way. But the A&R is, I mean, there's access through the guardrail, the A&R is separate from the common driveway. The common driveway is a whole different world.
I'm struggling with this.
The struggle was that there was a guardrail, but I showed you that there isn't, so that should-
No, it's-
alleviate that issue.
My struggle is Kevin's point of looking at it and then the struggle is I've got a stamped surveyor's engineering thing on here, so that's, that's my struggle right now. That's me personally.
Yeah. I'll be quite honest with you, the first time in 35 years that I heard that a guardrail makes a luciary frontage.
Welcome to the-
Yeah, 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 that's, that's a new one. I guess you learn such every day.
I'll, I'll find a case for you, hold on.
I, I've already heard it.
Oh, yeah.
That's what created this whole luciary frontage thing to begin with, was that-
Wait, I thought you said in 35 years you've never heard about it.
No, I didn't.
No, no.
No, we both said that, I've never heard that. I've done-
I just started hearing about it recently.
So, maybe I've gotten away with some stuff because I must have had 500 lots that I've, I've had this situation and it was never an issue, but that's alright.
I'm not sure I'd admit that to an attorney.
I'll admit it to an attorney, I'm going to be nice.
No, I'm still going to find them.
She's not a judge, she's an attorney.
So, well.
Yeah.
I don't know, Norm.
I don't have any trouble with the A&R. I can, I can see, like I say, holding the special permit off.
Till it's looked, till they can look at it.
Till we can take a look at it.
It's strange too, because I saw that opening, I'm saying, what the heck would they have an opening there for?
So, Amy, I, this is Tim Norwald, I've got a question for you. So, since that opening is giving access to the A&R, are, are we within our rights to approve the A&R but then, just like Norm said, discuss the common, the site plan review? That's what I'm struggling with.
Oh, definitely.
Okay.
Oh, definitely, they're, they're not connected at all.
Alright.
So, so there are, um, there are lots that create, are created by A&R and then 20 years later, somebody comes in to develop it, so. Yeah, um, and just, you know, that it's, um, it's Pulos versus Braintree, 413 Mass, 359, 1992.
Everybody got that?
As long as that person, as long as that person that questioned me has it, I'm good.
Okay. And I bet, I bet you it's in the, uh, the Commission de Val Patrick A&R handbook too.
It could be, it could be because that was done after 1992, so.
Okay.
And they do need to update that, I 100% agree with you because I always refer to that and then I'm like, wait a second, I can't because it's too old.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
I guess I'm, I'm leaning towards I'm okay with the A&R, but I can't go any farther with this guardrail here for this, this hearing.
That's fine.
No, no, I said, I'm, I'm okay with going forward with the A&R, but this hearing I can't go forward with until-
Do you guys like to set up a sidewalk and they can check exactly where it is?
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask for.
Tell me where you want to go.
Yeah, sidewalk.
Show you everything that's out there.
Kevin, thoughts?
Yeah, I would love to do a sidewalk on it.
Okay, I'm good with it.
Okay, uh-
You're going to need a motion to endorse the A&R?
Well, we can't do that in the public hearing.
Oh, we can't, that's right.
So, I would say what we need to do is first continue the public hearing.
Yep, for the site plan.
I would ask for the continuance to be the second week of November since I will not be here on the first week.
I won't be here the second week, but that's alright, you can, I mean, it'll, it'll be all settled by then, you don't need to be, right? If you go on your sidewalk and you say, hey, I'll be there, so we'll figure it out. So, if you want to do it the second week, that's fine, but I'm away for Thanksgiving, that's all.
We could always do the first week in December. I mean, I doubt you're going to be building these this winter. Okay. I won't question you, sir.
Okay, we cannot do sidewalks at meeting time anymore, it's dark.
Yeah. What about, and my problem is I can't attend because my full-time job keeps me pretty much buried.
Well, this was such an easy one to go by, you guys an individual, just, just actually, there's orange flags on both sides of those guardrails.
Yeah, we, we need to have them, if we're going to do a sidewalk, we probably need to have a meeting, which means a quorum.
I advise you to park where Mr. Schwartz used to sell vegetables.
Veggie Bob, yeah.
In that, in that. Don't park near that opening. Because you'll get in there right-
Can we legitimately have meetings on Saturday, uh, or sidewalk on Saturday? I don't know, Kevin, is that inconvenient for you on Saturday?
So, so if I may, if, if you are having a site visit, as provided that there is no deliberation, it is not a meeting. And so, the Attorney General has ruled that a site visit is not a meeting subject to the open meeting law. That means that on that site visit, there can be no discussions amongst the board. Um, you go, you observe, you can ask questions of the applicant or the applicant's representative, you can ask questions of the planner, but you cannot interact with each other. Um, and then it is not, not subject to the open meeting law.
Oh, okay. That's new.
Makes it easy. Yeah, go by, take a look and-
You have to go there all back to back, I guess?
Just, 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 just don't talk about the site.
Okay. If we, if we ask questions, it's Julian or Cleed we ask questions to.
Correct.
Alright, I'm good.
Where did they bury the dead cows?
Oh, town.
Oh, I saw it, like, town. And other things, remember what was across the street?
We continue this-
Common woman cow is buried there.
Do we want to, within this, set a date for a sidewalk?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
I'm assuming a weekend?
It's going to work for me because the weekdays with the sun going down, I can't get back to Rutland before the sun's down, I drive in the dark now.
Afternoon is probably, it's probably better.
Well, I, I'll probably door on the door, no, I'll close the door. Sad to you.
I don't need, like, Saturday at 2:00.
9:12, I'm open.
Saturday.
They usually go to church at 5:00.
Open 9:00 to 12:00, so, say one o'clock on a Saturday?
That's good, I'm fine.
Works for me.
The old folks crowd.
What about you, boss?
Yeah.
This coming Saturday at 1:00?
I'm around.
Yeah, this Saturday at 1:00?
Are you going to be around? Yeah, I'm going to North Carolina to visit my grandkids. Sorry, not today, so I'll be, but, I don't know.
Jack out there. I can show you where it is.
Yeah, we can have some, I can have a representative go, one of my guys go.
To show you where the guardrail is.
Tell me, tell me, tell me.
What's on it?
Yeah.
Well, there's somebody there, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, okay.
Show you where it is. At what time? 1:00? 1:00.
If there's no representative there, then it's a silent sidewalk.
No docking.
I'll bring the camera and take pictures. Okay, let's do that then, Saturday at 1:00?
Okay. Uh-
Guess I'll make a motion to continue
Yes.
with a sidewalk scheduled on Saturday, I don't know, October, whatever it is, what's today, the 25th?
29.
29, 20, 30th, Saturday is 29.
On the 29th at 1:00 PM.
But Tim, we need a date for the continued hearing.
Oh, uh, continue it to our second meeting in November. I don't know what that date is.
That's the 22nd of November.
22nd of November, thanks. At, I really like to get this out of the way, how about 6:15? Say that's a forum meeting, 6:45.
In the morning?
No, 6:45 at, on, uh, November 22nd for a continuance.
Oh, that's fine with me, yes. Like, what, sidewalk at 6:45 in the morning? What the hell, on a Saturday?
Yeah, that's not going to happen.
That's aggressive.
So, if you're going to do that-
Do we have too many things, Dave, on, on that, on that November 22nd?
No, that's not, no, that's not the issue, so, does the board plan on having a meeting on the 27th of December? Because what we have is an issue with the final action deadline. Because this is a site plan, it needs 45 days, final action from a date that was stamped in.
Push it out now.
That's what we're trying to do.
Push it out, okay.
Can we push it out to say-
27th of January?
January 15th.
Sure, whatever you want.
Alright, then I'll just take care of that.
Alright.
So, like a final action deadline from the, the 18th of October to the January 15th, 2023, and a continuance for the hearing.
Hearing 15th on Sunday?
I'm, I was picking a date off the top of my head, what's the, whatever the date is.
16th is Monday.
What's the second Tuesday, what's the, a second Tuesday in-
10th.
January?
10th.
Okay, so the following Monday would work, so we have to approve-
16th.
Well, before that, okay, 16th.
11623 for final action.
And the continuance from 10:18 to 11-
22 at 6:45 and a sidewalk at 1:00 PM this Saturday, October 29th.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, to the A&R. What are your wishes on the A&R?
Well, Amy's okay with it.
Everything's on you.
Everything is on you.
This is what we do with attorneys, we put all the, all the eggs in one basket.
That's right.
That's okay, I'm used, I'm used to it, don't worry about it. I'm good.
She says, you know, if there's access through that guardrail, he's got what he needs.
I guess I'll do a motion to endorse A&R plan at zero Main Street?
I hate this zero.
Yeah, for lots 1 and 2.
Second.
Is there any discussion on that?
Absolutely.
Zero Main Street across from-
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
I'm sorry, across the Nacogdoog, I'll amend my motion.
Yeah. Give you an idea of where it is.
Yeah.
Any discussion on that? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Got a nay or a yea?
Nay.
Okay.
That will afford a one. We may endorse the A&R.
Want to sign an hour and then release it once you have your fee? You wanted to sort of come in and-
It's going to be a while for this whole thing.
I can pick it up when I give you the check.
Yeah, but this is, this is timely. We actually already put the notice, the timeline is going to be here.
Doesn't sound good. It's a mini-split that's having a bad day with its compressor outside. Ah, it's a Mitsubishi, that's why. It was a Fujitsu, wouldn't have any issues.
No, I'm just working on that guy.
Yes, yes.
Is that all we need, Amy, for?
Actually-
Is there something else?
I think we're all set.
Yeah.
Alright, I'm going to log off before you guys change your minds.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright, alright, it was nice seeing everyone.
Next time, hopefully it's in person, haven't seen you for a long time.
I know, it's been years. Yes, I would like, I would like to come out. My, um, my son's in college in Worcester now, so it would be a good reason to go out.
Well, you can come, uh, November 17th when we're having a special town meeting for 38 seconds.
No thanks.
Don't blame me.
Alright, I will see you guys, have a good night.
Take care.
Good night.
Bye.
Very good.
Thank you guys, thank you guys.
Don't go anywhere, we still got you.
Yeah, might as well.
Please, please, Amy?
We got Brittenell and, uh, and, uh-
Bear Hill.
Bear Hill.
Sure, what do you, what do you need?
We had some comments on Brittenell Estates.
I did, I did take care of that. Maggie's already been out, they've already tested.
Just, you gotta get him that sewer report, oh, wait till you get there, I'm getting ahead of it.
You know, that's all been done and I don't want Kevin Downey to do that to me. It's all set.
Yeah, I keep seeing it coming up every report.
I know, we do it. I'll call Kevin Downey, I'll have a couple of that.
So, what do we get next, a public hearing for-
Okay.
Hillwood Center.
Are you done with Brittenell, Bear Hill?
No, we haven't gotten there, they're, they're last on the list.
It was out of order, the time's already kind of gone, thank you.
I'm okay with that.
You don't mind?
Yeah.
I mean, literally, I, I go to bed now.
Yeah, you and me both, I got to be in South Bubba Mall at 6:00, so.
Somewhere. Did we get copies of Quinn's report?
Yes, it's in the supplemental information provided to you.
Yeah, this one right here.
Oh. Did I? Yes.
You have this covered? What are you looking at now?
It's 8 and 9.
Brittenell Estates. Then look for it.
This one on 24th, it was yesterday, so. It's the fourth board looking at one that I I'm struggling with, the fourth bullet here. The rest of them is just information. It's a report from the sewer and then again, on second structure and the, the pictures I saw that was provided for the structural is, they're pretty much underway and we don't have a plan or a structural report yet.
On, he said, we, uh-
This is the second, this is the second crossing correct that I'm seeing here?
Yep, Kyle Holken talked to, um, Tommy about, uh, when he did the report.
Yep, Kyle Holgren talked to Tommy about, uh, when he did the report.
Yeah.
And, um, yeah, over the weekend, Mike went out and inspected, and he, he's writing up his reports, he's got pictures, he's, he's doing his inspections as he needs to, but, um, he hasn't, I don't think he's actually written anything out formally yet. They just barely finished the footings.
Yeah, I just, I mean, to me, they're through the design and engineering status, and we don't even have drawings on this yet, of how it's being put together, I'm struggling with that. We've got the first one, I'm good with that, but the second crossing?
We, we turned them all in. The plans?
Yeah, for the descent.
I think Tom, I'm pretty sure Tommy gave him the cow, I'm, I'm, I can't speak for sure, but I'm pretty sure, I know we have the drawings.
I'm sorry.
I can't say for certain that we don't.
Okay.
Have the second ones.
I just hadn't seen them, or...
Yeah.
And i- if we do, then I apologize, I'm wrong, but I just hadn't seen them come in or been mentioned, so that's the reason why I asked.
I'll get them, I'll get them the day again tomorrow, I, I know I have them, I have them right in my tree or something.
I just wanna make, like I said, all, everything's in the plan, so we got a complete set, and then, um, if we get the reports, then that'll pretty much tie together everything.
Just a quick note, I did stop over there today, uh, actually this afternoon, and it looked like they were putting up the wooden forms for pouring the concrete for those head walls.
Just look at this metal, I'm thinking of a World War Two barracks.
Oh, yeah.
Can you imagine what a waste of money that is and time and effort? Is that, just to...
Well, just think, you had to do concrete design, like a bridge.
I did that on Bear Hill with a boom.
So.
I just keep thinking, you know, when I was there, I saw they had like two guys working, that was it.
That, that, that's killing me too.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's a lot of work in, in, in one spot, and there's a lot of steel to tie, that has to tie, and, you know, just that, that first one's.
Crushed it.
But right now, we're graveling street, Yankee's been out, they're already there testing the base, and they're gonna test every nine inches, we'll, we'll go up every nine inches. They're gonna be there to test the compaction, the sieve test is done, the proctor test is done, all of that stuff is done in the gravel, so, Kyle, that's what Kyle was asking for the other day.
Yeah, yeah, we saw that.
That's all, we're gonna gravel it, so our plan is that if for some reason Glenn doesn't finish those head walls in time for us to get the block all built and get that all gravelled in there, I'm gonna pave up to it, pave up past it, and then have just gravel over the top of it if I can't. If it goes later than like the first of December, you know, but I'm gonna pave everything else, and you can still pass over it, just be gravel over the top of that.
Oh, boy.
Thing.
Man, I'm not sh-
That's not a good bridge.
Yeah, but they don't leave them that way for the winter.
No.
And that's, that's my fear right now.
Traffic going over that.
But I wouldn't normally...
I don't trust anybody.
The problem is, I wouldn't even normally, like, plow that, 'cause no houses in there, you know, so I...
And this is through the chair, if you do that, Cle, and I'll let the board decide, I, I would like to have some type of Jersey barrier to stop people from going over that bridge, that's my opinion. I- if you pave up to it and then you don't pave over, you just put gravel over it, so you're covering it up, people legitimately could go up to the paved area and then try to get across the gravel.
Yeah.
I, I just don't think that's...
No, I want them to be able to cross the gravel, that's the point.
Compacted.
I want them to be, it's just, it's just, I want them to be able to, 'cause that, that's needed for access.
With no safety bars on the side or anything, no, no.
There isn't on the other side already, the other side has a huge crossing like that, and there's no, and there's walls.
Yeah, but you got, yeah, but you've got curbs on the side and stuff like that.
Well, it'll be the same there, it won't be any different, it'll be all done, except it just won't be any pavement.
Okay.
That's the only, it, it just only crosses itself.
I thought when you said that, you were basically gonna do like two ramps and gravel, and that was it, that was scaring the hell out of me.
I may get a pavement, but I'm just saying, I'm gonna pave, just so I don't take any chances, I got a lot of houses that are gonna be closing up to the outside, and I wanna make sure that that's all...
Trying to make some...
Okay.
You know?
Yeah.
Oh, boy, okay.
I just, I'm just worried, but I, I hope they have it done, it just gotta get the...
I guess we could expect thirty feet of gravel.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hey, you're still gonna plow it.
Oh, you're still gonna plow it, and, and, but to me, it's still compacting it, though.
All right.
Actually, letting it sit over winter might not be a bad.
No, not bad at all.
Okay. Then there's the other bullets where there's outstanding comments that haven't been resolved in the sewer yet.
We, you need the testing, and I, I know it's done, and I know it passed, I just don't know why Kevin hasn't given it to me yet.
All right, well, again, I keep seeing these in the report after month after month, and it's getting old, and then I think Dave or Norm or somebody sent a letter, we haven't had any construction updates.
Reports.
Reports.
But they monthly, and then we've never got one.
Give us something.
This is Kyle's email?
We're supposed to get them from the developer or the builder.
I would think, Tommy Lawson.
That's to be handed in. Yeah, that's what I'm...
Something like that.
Just, I, I thought Kyle's qualified, is that, I, I...
If he is, I, I don't know, I'm Dave, why?
Kyle, Kyle is doing it, but he's, he's...
I paid him to do it.
It, it's, it's one of the things that, you know, I'm not sure if we put it into regulation or into some, some of the certificates, and, and this is just, it's going back, I think maybe even before my time on the board, and, and it's just one of the things, it's never been enforced, you know, say, hey, we haven't been getting any reports. So we tell you, hey, give us some reports, so give us a report, and then all of a sudden, oh, we don't get any more reports. So they said, hey, we haven't been getting reports, give us a report, that kind of thing, so, you know, we have not been enforcing that regularity for as long as I can remember.
I agree, but Kyle's coming out like once a week, and he does a report, and, and it seems pretty thorough, I mean, I...
I, I guess, you know, I, I, I'm a lot more satisfied with Kyle Holgren and Quinn Engineering doing this.
If, if that satisfies, then I'm good with it.
But you know, I, I think I'd like to see maybe Tommy Lawson's name on this thing, that he read it over.
He gets copied.
And sign off. Then I feel that, you know, he would keep pleading for them, then he will also know what Kyle's writing.
So what kind of...
Well, he's copied on the email.
Yeah, he has copied on all the emails.
He gets them, he reads them, and Kyle calls him directly, he doesn't even call me anymore, I feel left out of the loop.
I guess I'll leave it up to the board.
You, you want a note from his mother that he read the reports, or what?
Yeah, I know his father is not, bless his soul, he's the one that got me started with.
I mean, the only reason I keep thinking about it is in that Bryce Lemon, which the one gentleman brought up, he goes, hey, there's been no reports ever, you know, monthly reports.
Yeah.
Like, well, he's got a very good point, we don't have any, so, I mean, if we consider the younger gentleman that was sitting next to...
But, but I thought Kyle's qualified.
Again, Cle, I'm, I'm probably, if Kyle's reported, the board considers that a report, I'm good with it, 'cause Kyle's reports are thorough, I trust him implicitly.
And this is, well, I hate, I shouldn't say this probably, but to be verbally honest with you, I'd, I'd be happier with a report from Kyle than it would be with a report from Cle.
Well, no offense taken, I get it.
Carl's an engineer too, so I expect he's covering all the bases, and he's looking at...
He's working for you, I'm working for me.
Yeah. Yeah. Then we probably, that's gonna, that should be another tick on our subdivision reg updates.
I suppose, yeah.
Is monthly reports either from town engineer or from developer, instead of, 'cause I'm pretty sure it's in the regs as from the developer.
But then, you know, what, what, what do you do when? How, how long did Bear Hill Two sit there with nothing being done?
A year.
Like, a year? You still want a monthly report?
Oh, yeah, of course I do.
No activity, no activity, nothing?
And so I have to do that every, forever source, even if there's nothing's going on, I've gotta send a report every month, actually, it's weekly.
Kyle, an engineer, used to give you guys reports in January, February, and March, when there was zero going on, and charging the developer a thousand dollars every time.
Oh, yes, oh, yes, oh, yes.
Came to a screeching halt pretty quick.
Bobby Tolliday used to yell at me.
I mean, I'm okay with that, Danny, so, I don't, I'll let the rest of the board speak, but I'm fine.
Like I said, it would've been nice just to have Tommy Yegu say, yes, I agree, and, and with everything, and update if anything needs.
Okay, anybody, anything more on Brittenell? Yes?
Um, you gonna have any more lard done over there?
No.
Oh, oh, it's all lard?
Well, I tell you, the guy that logged it, you know what happened, right, he went over on the D C I property.
Ching.
And he took big logs out of there, and the D C I grabbed them, and he's got a big plant, a lot of stuff in there.
I didn't know.
He went not on their property, but in their zone, my property.
Oh, yeah.
We, we specifically flagged out where he logged, where he was supposed to log, and he went way off the beaten path, and forgot all the big nice logs and took them out of there while he was in there.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah.
Cool.
So the D C I wasn't happy, but there will be some more for the other two cul-de-sacs, but not, not anywhere near like it was for the first one.
I guess I need that.
The reason why I was asking, you know, if Stevie comes over to do anything, you know, have him run down the easement to the rail trail.
Okay. Yep.
Guess I'm gonna ask the elephant question, with that road being in, is that considered the second egress? So that means the certifications of occupancy can be handed out for Bear Hill Two, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, to most...
Once it's paved.
But if it's gravelled for thirty feet, is that...
Well, that's, that was my point.
It's not the end of the world.
I guess we can live with thirty feet of gravel.
Okay, I just, I wanted to ask to be clear.
I may get it all paved anyway, but I can guarantee it, everything will be, and that'll be done, but it just might not get, if the plant's closed, I'm screwed.
Will cars be able to get across it, will an ambulance be able to get there, will a fire truck be able to get there?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to be crystal clear. Okay, that's it for me.
There's nothing for Bear Hill Two then?
No, nothing.
Right, Quinn indicated that he did a quick site visit and found nothing to report to the board, so therefore does not report on Bear Hill Two.
Excellent, I think that's it.
Okay. Okay, let's get back to number six.
You's done.
Benny by time, thank you guys, see you guys later.
Okay. Item six, a public hearing and zone amendment for the Village Center zoning district.
Get an iPhone.
And we have a number pages in our packet that basically is saying that this is an amendment to, uh, the Village Center District to include special permit uses, automobile sales and repair, and motorcycle sales and repair. And there is, I guess, a copy of the existing bylaw.
Mister Chair, before you go any further on this, I would just request that this matter be postponed until ten twenty-seven, twenty twenty.
That's right, that's right, that's right.
Because of a notification issue.
Yes.
However, as you'll see on item number seven, we could have an information session on this V C change without any deliberation, we have, or just discuss it, gather information from anybody in the public who may have signed, or how do I publicize this and tell people that it's gonna be postponed from here until the twenty-seventh.
Okay, so, yes, we are postponing it to what?
Thursday, the twenty-seventh, in two days.
At five o'clock?
At five o'clock.
I will not be here.
Right, we did discuss is that the bylaw subcommittee meeting, or the planning board special meeting, the reason we want to do it earlier is because the FinCon and Select Board meeting, the joint meeting, we would like to have a recommendation in hand for that meeting, which starts at six o'clock.
Okay.
I do believe those, uh, two members could make it for sure, or one possibly, I don't know what your schedule is available, is...
I can make myself available, if this is good.
That'd be great, so we would have three members at least, this is a zoning change, so you need three.
Okay, so we need a motion to postpone the hearing?
Yes, please.
Yep. Anybody?
I'll make a motion, we postpone the hearing to October twenty-seventh at five P M.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
It'll be in the annex, or here?
No, it'll be, um, in the small carpets room, also known as the Calkins Room. In this, in this same floor, at lower level.
Anything further? In favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, which leads us to item seven, and considering we now have a huge audience here, uh, information session, any, any here wishing?
Do you want a quick rundown on this, or you come?
Yeah, I would, I would, just a quick, this is what we're gonna be presenting.
Yeah, so this is what I was prepared to do, is just give a quick overview, so I'll, I'll let you open up the meeting first, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Well, now, this is, this is just an information session.
That's correct.
Right, so we postponed the hearing, so that's gone, so we're now into item seven, the information session.
All right, good, thank you, so, what this has to do with is a, an amendment to the zoning bylaw, the V C section, to add one new use for the first time, that would be auto sales, repair, and sales, and motorcycle repair and sales. Currently, these uses are not allowed in the V C district, um, as way of background, for the springtime meeting of twenty twenty-two, a citizen brought a citizen's petition to allow these uses in the V C zone, the citizen proposed to have this done by site plan, um, this was not accepted by town meeting, they didn't vote it, and they referred it to the planning board for further action, so this gets to the planning board bylaw subcommittee, who has several meetings, and in, I believe, June of twenty twenty-two makes a recommendation to endorse the concept, but subject to special permit, not site plan. Special permit has a greater level of protection and a level of conditions than a site plan, so that was recommended favorably to the planning board, and in keeping with the requirements for amendments to zoning, there has to be a hearing, so that's where we are now, to satisfy that requirement. So this would modify this section of the bylaw, which you see here, which is the V C section, and it brings in the use underlying for the first time. As you'll see, the Village Center is an area of, of some, some level of intensity, you know, you can see that there is various uses allowable there now, gasoline service stations, hotels, motel inns, repair, dry cleaners, um, the two areas that we're talking about that are V C zones are, the first one is located on Route one twenty-two south, heading towards Paxton, so it's Barry Paxton Road and Pleasantale. What you see in blue is the V C zoning district, I mean, as, as I believe we know, that's an area of a fair amount of intensity, it's one of the more commercial parts of town. The other V C zone is up towards Homestead, once again, it's shown in blue, this area may not have the same level of intensity as Barry Paxton, but it is possible to have that type of intensity based upon what's allowed in the zoning district. So the law in short, it is that this was referred to the planning board, planning boards recommend it favorably, the bylaw subcommittees recommend it favorably, so now we're looking to just get this information out there, have the hearing on the twenty-seventh, make a recommendation, and then proceed to the town meeting. So that's pretty much what I have at this point, is there any questions or comments on this proposal?
Thing I probably didn't ask is, in the Town Center District, is, is it a special permit too?
Yes, it is.
That's all I want to do, make sure everything's identical between what we're doing in the Town Center, what we're doing in the V C districts.
Yes.
So they'll be identical, perfect, 'cause this was left out of the V C's.
And that's, yeah.
And that, that was the mistake, and we're rectifying that with this update to the bylaw. Perfect, thank you.
There are times on, yeah, the other one on one twenty-two, that should we have chucked the blue line all the way up to
Yeah, that's...
Irish Lane.
That's another, another consideration, but not for now.
Okay.
When these changes happen, there's, um, notification to homeowners of anybody in the blue V C D, are they notified that their zoning has changed?
The own, okay.
Or that it could, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
The hearings and the town meeting coming up, are these house lots notified of that?
Right, right, so what, the, the zoning district itself is not being extended, the zoning district that you see in blue is gonna stay
Right.
On the lots that it's covering.
It's being modified.
By a use, that's being added for the first time, um, because of this type of zoning change, a butter notification at that level is not required, what's required is that we have the hearing, we notify regional planning commission, adjacent, uh, planning boards, but the statute doesn't call for that type of notification. However, we have tried to publicize this as well. However, we have tried to publicize this as well as we could, using the town's resources, I believe there was an email blast on this.
I mean, for me, it was more not the butters, it was the actual homeowners that live in the Village Center District, and I just think that, oh, jeez, I didn't know I could do, you know what I mean? Could go, go, it could go either way, but you know, all these homeowners, all these houses, they, the people might not even know they're in the Village Senate District or the Town. No, honestly, they might not, I'm just curious if we look at the things and send out a thing, and might, if it's not a requirement, we don't have to do it. I'm just curious if that's ever been brought up, just to, maybe this helps bring more business to town. Now, all of a sudden, it's a homeowner that says, oh, I didn't even know I could do that. I didn't know that I even li- oh, gee, I didn't realize that I could put another, you know, I could do something in my...
Business in my lower area and...
No, I could even do it, and now all of a sudden, we're adding businesses, because people didn't know they could put businesses there.
Finally give us some motorcycle repair.
Interesting point. It's not required, what we will try to do is publicize it, and maybe part of the presentation is awareness that if you have land you're, you have, it may be a higher, better use for, in terms of commercial uses, which could encourage the tax base, the commercial side, which would be useful.
Same thing with Maple Ave, I don't think people on Maple Ave know that
That's a, this is a tax center?
They could have a two-family home, and all of a sudden, they could live upstairs and downstairs rented out to a lawyer or whatever.
Why didn't I do that?
I don't think a lot of people, I know for a fact, a lot of people on Maple Ave don't know that their house is, is also commercially zoned. They don't know it. Dave, is there any chance that we...
Before, I think tangential to this conversation is the master plan effort. Where we're looking to get recommendations and publicize the master plan, which is gonna talk to some of these things, it's gonna talk about maybe extend V C over to Paxton, or encourage a reuse of land, or if there's vacant land, to use it for commercial, so I think we're gonna try to dovetail this conversation with that conversation. As we go, and Maple Ave as well, the Town Center, as you know what the Town Center study, is things, the recommendations made for Town Center to encourage economic development, to encourage a better use of some of the properties, or expansion of them, if they can go up higher, to get more space for commercial activity, so we're definitely thinking of those.
Any chance, Dave, that we could, I mean, I'm just looking for publicity, that ask, um, I don't know, Tamika, I don't know who controls the board, I probably should know that, the, the...
I can have a sign put up on the board indicating
Yeah.
town meeting is gonna be looking at this issue.
Yeah, that's all, and then I'll have the need or somebody put it on the website, that this is coming up.
Done that already.
'Cause they're, I mean, people do look at that sign when they drive by, and, I mean, I check the website every once in a while, see what's on there.
Unfortunately, it's hard to do all kinds, to do, to get people in before a town meeting.
Yeah.
As you know, sometimes you do your best effort for outreach, it doesn't happen till you get to the town meeting, and then...
Think, Norm, you gotta take a Facebook page out, like Director Buckley, and start putting on updates.
Right.
Kidding.
What's Facebook?
Yeah, well, Director Buckley's doing a good job.
Moving on.
Okay, anything else on the zoning?
Got one iPhone person out there, I don't know if they
are here for the comments from the public?
Any comments from the public on this?
Okay.
No idea. Okay, last item, planning board bylaw subcommittee update.
Uh, the planning board has completed a drawout, um, made a number of applications, and has begun to discuss ideas for, uh, larger parcels of land to be zoning for commercial use.
That's where Norm came in.
Yeah. Excellent idea.
That's where Norm came in.
Yeah, he was out recruiting a, uh, an industrial park.
This is obviously mine, this is Route sixty-eight.
And that's it.
Patriot of Wayne.
Yeah.
And that's the, our old industrial district is in the back.
Yeah. Yeah. This road here is, uh, out the way, uh, toll field.
That's the new hydraulic shop over there, since Dick decided to retire.
Just as, this is an update, uh, I've talked with Dave about, uh, Glenn Cockerell, and he is gonna reach out to him uh, to see about getting him to
Oh, that'd be so good.
bylaw meetings.
I just missed the last part, to see about getting him to...
One of our bylaw meetings.
Okay.
So.
That'd be nice, we could... I'm tired, motion to adjourn.
Is there any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.